Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask my colleagues to please unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance
The United States of America.
And to the republic One nation Under God Indivisible With liberty and justice Because this is a remote meeting, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Present.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez? Ms. Lopera?
Present.
Mr. Meta?
Present.
Ms. Palanco Garcia? Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil?
Present.
Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the School Committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the Committee's webpage, under the February 15th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The Committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The interpretation feature has been activated. Click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment close today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that Committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight, we are proud to honor 31 very talented and dedicated teachers who have earned or renewed National Board Certification. National Board Certified Teachers are highly accomplished educators who meet high and rigorous standards. Before I turn it over to Assistant Superintendent for Teacher Leadership and Development Shakira Ford Walker to tell us more about the National Board Program, I'd like to invite the Superintendent to say a few words. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. I am so excited to start our meeting tonight with recognition of our most accomplished educators who have achieved or renewed their National Board Certificate. National Board Certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools across the nation. It is the most respected professional certification available in K-12. BPS has 34 educators who achieved or renewed certification this year, 21 newly certified, and 13 renewals. These teachers join a growing community of board-certified educators in the BPS that are now more than 140 strong across our schools. That's an amazing number. Each of these accomplished educators earned the profession's highest mark achievement through a rigorous, performance-based peer-review process, demonstrating their proven impact on student learning and achievement. We're so proud of these educators, thrilled that they could take the time tonight so that we could recognize them properly. And it is my pleasure to turn the rest of the program over to Assistant Superintendent for Teacher Leadership and Development, Shakira Ford Walker, as she will now share with you a bit more about their individual accomplishments.
Good evening, all. Thank you, Superintendent Skipper and Madam Chair. I am so excited to recognize and celebrate our National Board Certified Teachers today. It is a great accomplishment, as you mentioned, and an important statement about the high quality of their classroom practice. Our students, for sure, are the real beneficiaries. I want to share just a little bit about the program and the collaborative work BPS and the Boston Teachers Union are engaged in to recruit, support, and increase the number of National Board Certified Teachers in the Boston Public Schools. The National Board was established as the profession's vehicle for defining and recognizing accomplished teaching. National Board standards are created by teachers for teachers, as is National Board Certification, which is a voluntary process to certify teachers against those standards. The founding mission of the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards is to advance the quality of teaching and learning across our schools. We are fortunate that the Boston Public Schools and the Boston Teachers Union have partnered and established a joint program to support diverse educators to achieve the gold standard in teaching excellence and expand the number of MBCTs in BPS. Our program is centered on elevating teaching and empowering teachers. We provide a variety of learning opportunities and individualized support to candidates pursuing their certification at no cost. These supports include informational meetings, foundational workshops, technical support with uploading components, and the opportunity to collaborate with other MBCTs who are pursuing their certification. These groups are led by current Boston Public Schools National Board Certified Teachers, and through this process, teachers learn to analyze their practice, which results in deeper understanding and improved teaching. As you can see on the slide, in order to advance our goal of increasing the number of MBCTs in BPS and provide accomplished teachers with a leadership role, we redesigned the candidate support model. This newly redesigned model has expanded our capacity to support candidates through a more distributed leadership model that engages more current MBCTs in the effort to grow our ranks within BPS. Our goal was to build a system that is aligned to the new process, build awareness about what supports are offered, enlarge our network, and grow the profession to advance student learning and achievement. Next slide, please. We all know that no one person can do this alone. We are incredibly fortunate and grateful to have an amazing and dedicated team of teacher leaders who provide tremendous support to our prospective candidates on their board certification journey.
Yeah, please slow down.
Sure. We currently have over 50 candidates pursuing in this round and are actively seeking more candidates for the 2022, '23, and 2023, '24 school year. I want to commend and thank the members of our National Board Leadership Team, our cohort leaders, and our readers for their tireless efforts to offer supports around board certification, advance professional practice, and promote teacher leadership, all of which ultimately will improve the quality of teaching and learning in our schools. Thank you, team. For those educators who may be viewing to this evening, if you would like more information or have questions about our programs, please email nationalboard@bostonpublicschools.org. I am now going to turn it back over to Superintendent Skipper, who will invite President Tang of the Boston Teachers Union up to provide some remarks and honor our candidates this evening.
Thank you, Shakira, and so it is my pleasure to introduce the President of the BTU, Jessica Tang. Again, we're just enormously grateful for partnership and to have these very talented and dedicated educators in our classroom every day impacting our students. Jess, do I see Jessica?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great.
Thanks so much, Superintendent Skipper. So, on behalf of the 10,000 members of the Boston Teachers Union, I am so happy to be here today to celebrate the accomplishment of this incredible group of educators, including those of you who have accomplished National Board Certification for the first time and those who are renewing their certification as well. In a time when, unfortunately, many people are considering leaving the profession, this accomplishment shows that you have made the choice to deepen your commitment instead, so thank you. We know that National Board Certified Teachers are critical members of their school communities, not only for the great work they do in the classroom each day, but for the impact they make across the school and district. MBCTs take on too many leadership roles to name here, but both formal and informal roles from leading teams, serving on ILTs, designing curriculum, applying for grants, and more.
Slow down.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yep. So I want to especially thank our National Board Leadership Team, Margaret Arleskus, Kwaiisha Clark, Christina De Guzman, Susannah Gill, and Benedict Manning, as well as all of those members in the National Board Community, including also the cohort leaders, National Board readers, who come together to provide supports to those being honored today and to the dozens of teachers currently in the pipeline. Thank you also to Assistant Superintendent Shakira Walker Ford, as well as BTU Director of Professional Learning, Paul Tritter. We are grateful for the partnership with Boston Public Schools and our shared commitment to increasing and diversifying the ranks of board-certified teachers in Boston. Of course, this kind of leadership is not exclusive to National Board Certified Teachers, and there are so many ways that all of our educators show leadership to make a positive impact for students, schools, and communities each day. So again, thank you to everyone who helps to make this partnership so successful and your leadership also in helping to elevate and celebrate our members, the BPS educators, for all of the ways they lead.
Thank you, Ms. Tang. Thank you. I will now introduce our teachers. When I call your name, please turn on your camera. Congratulations to the following teachers who recently earned or renewed National Board Certification, and I'm going to do my very best to pronounce your names correctly, and if I don't, please correct it. Thank you. John Alauskas from the Richard Murphy K-8 School, English as a New Language/Early Childhood and Middle Childhood. Margaret Alauskas, Harvard Kent Elementary School, English as a New Language, Early and Middle Childhood. Leslie Abbe, Edison K-8 School, Generalist, Early Childhood. Suzanne Mason, Gardner Pilot School, Exceptional Needs Specialist, Early Childhood through Young Adulthood. Kathleen Butler, David A. Ellis Elementary School, Career in Technical Education/Early Adolescence through Young Adulthood. Christine De Guzman, English High School, English Language Arts, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Mary Dabenga, Boston Latin Academy, English Language Arts, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Nicole Giordani, Richard Murphy K-8 School, English Language Arts, Early Adolescence. Amanda Hannah, Boston Arts Academy, Science/Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Sasha Heavy, Gardner Pilot Academy, Exceptional Needs, Early Childhood through Young Adulthood. Jeffrey Eisen, Boston Latin Academy, Social Studies, History, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Teresa Aveloah, Mildred Avenue K-8 School, Literacy, Reading, Language Arts, Early and Middle Childhood. Christina Bianchi, Jeremiah Burke High School, Social Studies, History, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Rachel Keneely, Office of Health and Wellness, Health Education/Early Adolescence through Young Adulthood. Christine Leathers, BCLA McCormick 7-12, English as a New Language, Early Adolescence through Young Adulthood. Wing Lung, Boston Latin School, Mathematics, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Kristy Lux, English High School, English Language Arts/Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Lisa McGeorge, Samuel Adams Elementary School, Generalist, Middle Childhood. Robin Mankel, Margarita Muniz Academy, Mathematics, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Lily Ann Marshall, Boston Latin Academy, English Language Arts/Early Adolescence. Jonna McCarthy, XO High School, English Language Arts/Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Grace McGregor, Franklin Roosevelt K-8, Literacy, Early, excuse me, Literacy, Reading and Language. Carrie O'Rourke, Matha Elementary School, Literacy, Reading, Language Arts, Early and Middle Childhood. Carolyn Silver Sanchez, Curly K-8 School, Generalist, Early Childhood. Anne Slater, East Boston EEC, Literacy, Reading, Language Arts, Early and Middle Childhood. Louisa Sparrow, Oliver H. Perry K-8 School, Exceptional Needs Specialist, Early Childhood through Young Adulthood. Frank Swoboda, English High School, Social Studies, History, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Emily Truno, English High School, English as New Language, Early Adolescence through Young Adulthood. Allison Villa, Boston Latin Academy, Science, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Clara Webb, Boston Latin School, Social Studies, History, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. And lastly, Carol Wu, Boston Green Academy, Mathematics, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Congratulations to you all. Now, I'd like to invite all of our board-certified teachers to turn on their cameras so we can see you. We have citations and pins that we will mail out to all of you. Congratulations again, and thank you all for raising the level of excellence in our schools. Thank you. We'll now move on to the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 1st, 2023 School Committee Meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez? Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia? Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll now move on to the Superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair, again, and again, congratulations to all of the National Board recipients. Before I begin my report, I would like to acknowledge the recent media reports regarding the Inspector General's communication to Chairwoman Robinson regarding our invitation for bids for transportation. BPS Transportation Staff continues to work to finalize a contract for school bus transportation for the upcoming fiscal year. With the informed guidance of the Inspector General's office, we have identified opportunities to clarify and improve contract administration that will be beneficial throughout the term of the contract. We will continue to work with TransDev to finalize the contract, and we anticipate presenting it to the School Committee at the March 1st meeting. Also, as you may recall, retro pay for BTU members is scheduled to be paid out this week, Friday, February 17. The retro pay is for all BTU members, with the exception of the family liaison positions, hub school coordinators, and adult education instructors. Members do have access to view their paycheck beginning today. The groups I just mentioned are on a different timeline because their pay reconfiguration because of their pay reconfiguration, and this has been communicated to the union and these individual employees. Each payment is unique to the employee depending on a variety of factors, like education level, type of school, job title, etc. Because each payment is specific to the individual, and there's so much retro to pay out, we anticipate there may be additional adjustments needed, and we are going to work diligently to correct them as quickly as possible. We sent a letter to all BTU members earlier this week, which included a Google form, so members can let us know of any issues immediately. We are operating with the goal of responding to each specific inquiry by the end of next week. OHC also hosted an info session Monday night and again this afternoon to support any concerns and to share important information about tax implications, retirement, and how the payments were calculated. Issues may arise for a variety of reasons, but some examples may include an educator who received a graduate degree halfway through the school year or an educator who moved from one type of school to another school from year to year, both of which would result in different payment. Of the over 9,200 employees, both active and inactive, who have received their retro pay, less than 2% have submitted an inquiry into the Google form. The overwhelming majority of our employees have received their correct retro pay. We're grateful to the Human Capital Team for working as hard and as quickly as possible and to keep their commitment to transparency, better communication, and continuous improvement. I also want to thank the union and Jess Tang for their continued patience and partnership as we try to get this work right and done as quickly as possible. In terms of our transformation schools, which is on my SIPS report tonight for an update, you know, as part of the systemic improvement plan, we made a commitment to provide a quarterly progress monitoring update to the School Committee on our transformation schools. I want to start by thanking Drew Dr. Eccleston and the Transformation Team for their commitment to this work. Every successful school transformation effort is the product of hard work and collaboration between a broad group of school and district leaders, community members, and families. The focus is on guiding school leaders through the transformation process, including planning, goal-setting, monitoring, and demonstrating and documenting successes. The Transformation Office also supports district and school efforts to engage school communities in improvement processes and to promote transparency and partnership at all stages. Tonight, I'm going to share a few slides with you, and we'll share a more comprehensive slide deck and memo with School Committee in the days coming. We are seeing important signs of progress in our transformation schools. That is the great news. The new regional structure provides a strong foundation of support and guidance for all schools, but in particular is supportive for our transformation schools in receiving support from a team of central office staff. Consistent district practices provide clarity and focus to the regional structures, including the district's instructional focus on equitable literacy, a streamlined process for quality school plans, and consistent quarterly instructional rounds. Mid-year survey data from our transformation schools also indicates significant growth in a positive adult learning environment, which we know is key for improvement. What we are seeing in the quarterly instructional rounds is evidence of initial progress in implementation of equitable literacy practices. As an example of some of this progress, I want to highlight a few questions from the mid-year teacher climate survey. These individual questions illustrate the progress that we can see in the environment for adult learning and collaboration across the majority of our transformation schools. 74% of the transformation schools, or 20 out of 28, showed improvement in professional learning for adults as indicated by Panorama Educator Survey responses as compared to spring of 2022 survey results. We've also seen critical areas to focus on for continued improvement. For instance, chronic absenteeism continues to be a focus area when comparing data from last year from this year to last year. We see that 25 of 28 transformation schools have decreased their chronic absenteeism rates. The rate of absenteeism at transformation schools in the aggregate remains higher than the rate at the non-transformation schools, but the gap between transformation and non-transformation schools has narrowed 15 percentage points to 11 this year. That's substantial. We also know that there's significant work to do around reading achievement and growth, which lags behind non-transformation schools. In this slide, we show the achievement percentile by grade level for transformation schools and non-transformation schools. The gap between transformation and non-transformation schools in achievement ranges from 17 to 33. We know achievement is only one part of the story. When we look at growth between the fall and winter of this year, transformation schools, on average, also have lower growth compared to the non-transformation schools. The median conditional growth percentile for non-transformation schools was 41 compared to the conditional growth percentile of 36 for transformation schools. We do see bright spots within our transformation schools, with seven of the 28 transformation schools having a median reading CGP higher than non-transformation schools. The School Committee will be receiving a memo and additional slides related to quarter-two progress monitoring for transformation schools. We will also be sharing recommendations from the financial equity analysis conducted in the fall around improving support to our transformation schools and ensuring that they are sufficiently resourced to drive the work ahead. Looking ahead for quarter three, our transformation schools will do a full report again, similar to quarter-one report back in the fall. I'd also like to update on what we saw was a very exciting movement of the creation of a Transportation Advisory Council. This council had its first meeting last week. It was great to meet all of the members and to hear each of their unique experiences and perspectives around transportation. As we know and have talked about in here, transportation is a key component in providing equitable educational opportunities for our students, and the expertise and range of perspectives in this group And the expertise and range of perspectives in this group as they will share among themselves and with um the other stakeholders of the district on the group will be critical as we strive to ensure that all students can access the resources they need, regardless of their circumstance. As you know, we received a report from the Council of Great City Schools, and we recently reviewed that as part of school committee. They made recommendations for improvements in transportation to BPS. And as we all know, and the report pointed out, transportation is uniquely complex here in Boston. At the same time, BPS transportation is also impacted by external factors, some outside of our control, like traffic, fourth worst city in the country for traffic, and some that require a significant collaboration both between the district and beyond, such as with our, our charter school Brothers and Sisters and with our private schools. The team continues to work hard to implement improvements across the transportation system. And we are eager to continue to engage with our many stakeholders for feedback and accountability on this work. The advance, the advisory council will continue to meet monthly, and I will keep you updated on their work uh through our school committee meetings. Want to call out a few really bright spots um celebration from the past week. We received two electric buses that were unveiled uh last week. An additional eighteen buses will arrive in the coming weeks and are expected to be in use shortly following the February school vacation. I had the chance to uh join Mayor Wu, our transportation department, um members of TransDev, our bus drivers, and others to talk about what it means to have these buses in our fleet for our students. And we actually got to ride um on the school bus as well. Uh, also, uh, I joined uh Chair Robinson uh at an event recently, um, which was called Girls With Impact. They're a partner organization with BPS, and their mission is advancing boss, it's called advancing Boston, and it's a commitment to train ten thousand young women as leaders. And so they held an event uh in which uh I had the opportunity to moderate a panel uh with um two young CEO students who were CEOs, both uh one was a junior, one was a senior. Uh, and at on that panel, they shared their experience, their uh what drew them into the program, what skills they learned from the program, and what they hope to do in their future. Um, we hope that, you know, to be able to grow a partnership uh with Girls With Impact here in BPS. And um two of our schools have already expressed interest and are going to be included in that what network, East Boston High School and Boston Latin School. Um, also, I had the pleasure of attending with Chair Robinson and Dr. Anna Tovaris uh at the in, the Office of English for New Bostonians when they held their immigrant parent voices event on this past Thursday. Um, the event was the final one in a series marking their twentieth anniversary. And this was an organization that I had the pleasure of working with back when I was a network soup, when I went to Somerville and now back here in Boston. I was really uh truly inspired and in awe of the parents who are, who ta, who gave testimony um is participating in the program um where they were learning English as a second language and yeah, the program took place at the Winship. Uh, it was very clear hearing the stories of the parents, how important it was for them to have that opportunity, that it helped them to be able to engage with their students, um their children, and to discuss what was happening in school, to be able to engage with other parents, and to be able to participate in the school in the form of school site council and parent advocacy groups and so forth. Um, big thank you, um, you know, certainly to uh the leader, our school leader, uh Brian Radley, who hosted the event. Uh, there was also our Quincy uh school leader Cynthia Sohu, who was there as well. Um, and it just was very, um, I, I just want to applaud the efforts of the school leaders and the family liaison in bringing the program into the schools. There were also some students there whose parents were in the classes. And um at one point, I asked the students what that meant to them, and the students articulated how important it was for their parent to feel um and find a way to be included in the community, um and that they were very proud of that, and they applauded their parents' hard work. So it was um, it was just a, an amazing event all around. Uh, finally, tonight, you know, you're going to hear a update on our grading policy. Uh, I'd like to say, uh, you know, first of all, uh, big thank, thank you and shout out to our team. They have been working incredibly hard over the past two years, um, certainly well before my time on this policy. Um, I'm grateful to their work, especially uh to, to Dr. Jean Rowntree, um, and also to Dr. Christine Landry for their leadership with the work. Um, we'll provide an update tonight through the lens of students. And after further engagement, we will bring a final proposal to you later this spring. Some of the new practices will require a real culture shift to our current thinking and way of doing business, um, and certainly a, a shift to some of our practices in grading. Community engagement uh and education as well as um staff training will be critical for implementation with the policy when it is eventually um put forward to you. Uh, certainly, other um urban cities have adopted similar policies. Um, and you know, we believe that this policy is another tool to ensure consistency across the district with grading. Um, certainly emphasizes um students' deep understanding of the content and places value on that. Um, emphasizes regular feedback in the grading process and um ensures that grades are motivational instead of punitive. Um, so we've create cremated, we've created a committee to examine uh the ways in which we grade our students, and a lot of that work will be shared as part of the update. So, um, certainly a very rich last week and this week and lots to talk about tonight. So, uh, that concludes my report, uh Chair, and I will happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. Like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes, one to two questions. And I'd like to remind BPS staff to also be briefing your responses. If you have additional questions, I'll come back and do a second round. Please raise your hand if you have a question would like to start. Ms. LaPiera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, good evening, everyone. First of all, I just want to congratulate our teachers. Uh, my children were so excited. They made it um a dinner and a show, and so they were cheering for the teachers who uh were being um celebrated. So congratulations. It was also fun to see uh some other families pop into the video. Um, Superintendent, thank you for the report. Appreciate the, the updates. Um, and particularly around the inputs as well as the outputs that we're seeing within the transformation schools. Looking forward to uh digging in um in, in a deeper way with uh additional materials that your team will send over. Um, one of the questions that I have is with the report that we received around transportation, um, we know that, as you mentioned, with the Transportation Advisory Council, there are a lot of factors and variables that impact what that really looks like for our students. And so I'm curious to understand two things. Um, one, how are we going to gather, how are we going to leverage any of the feedback or information that we're receiving through the Transportation Advisory Council with the prospective um new contract? Um, that will be up for discussion in the next couple of weeks. I think that's question one. Um, question two, I know that the advisor council is obviously long-term, but you know, we also have to make some immediate changes, and so I'm curious about that. Um, my other question also related to um transportation is how, what are we looking at? What are we prioritizing from the report as we're thinking through that contract? Um, that will be up for discussion in the next couple of weeks. Uh, so we'll start there.
That's great. So I'm gonna actually ask Director Rosengard to come on, um, because I, first of all, just a further congratulations to him um on, on the directorship. And uh, you know, I know that uh part of the work of the advisory council, to your point, is both short-term and long-term. So we want to glean as much as we can between now and, you know, the end of sort of the first negotiation with the contract. But then certainly, we see a lot of the advice coming out of the Transportation Advisory Council as useful to us as we take on the changes that are part of the overall report. Um, you know, we'll clearly see overlap there. We've also gotten a lot of feedback from the hotlines as well. Um, so we've already have a lot of data there to be able to process and factor into the contract. Um, so Dan, do you want to um just speak at least, uh, you know, about the, the first council meeting and uh any kinds of themes that emerged in there?
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. Um, the, the first advisory council meeting was, was really exciting, and I think really demonstrated how, uh, you know, how helpful it is to just get a diverse range of perspectives. And we just, we spent so much time just hearing from, you know, the parents, the, the school leaders, the community members on that council about their perspectives and their experience with transportation. And I think that, you know, that is really going to inform the work that we're doing. Um, and over the, the next couple of meetings, you know, we're really going to dive in with them on the recommendations that came out of the CGCS report and the, the work that, you know, we're doing, um, you know, to implement those recommendations, both to, to make sure that we're getting the advisory council's feedback on, you know, the, the work in the plans that we have in place. And also, you know, as a, another avenue for accountability uh for us in the work that we're doing. Um, so one of the, you know, one of the councils, the CGCS recommendations was about the implementation of the IFB. And so that is, you know, that is one area where, you know, as, as we're looking at how are we actually administering this new contract, we will, you know, absolutely be looking to share that information and kind of get feedback from the council. Um, so that, that's your first question. And then your second question was around prioritization of the CGCS recommendations. So this is an area where, where one of their recommendations was to update the business plan, the transportation five-year business plan from uh FY twenty-one. And so one of the, the kind of first things we're doing is taking that piece and saying, let's look at all the different recommendations that came out of CGCS as well as the strategic projects that have already been ongoing, you know, under, under uh Del Stannisloss's leadership before and, and all the pri, progress that's been made and come up with, okay, what is the list of, you know, exactly what we're doing and timeline and prioritization? So I would say more to come in the, you know, over the next month or so on that. But uh two areas that, that I would highlight that are, are kind of within BPS, and so we know that we can really push these forward and in fact have already started this work, is one is around the, the cross-department collaboration and looking at, you know, how, how student data is flowing into transportation as we're preparing for the summer and the fall and, and really kind of defining and hitting those timelines. And another one is around the, the technology pieces in terms of, you know, figuring out how are we monitoring ridership on buses, um, getting tablets on buses, that piece, and that's an area where our, our team has already started kind of pushing that work forward.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, I'm trying to separate my next question from the transfer, transportation pieces. Um, but I know that again, they are intertwined, so I'll do my best to separate it. When we think about um our, kind of our assignment process, at what point are we going to interrogate how we're doing assignments? Um, and right now, there's a disproportionate number of, there's a high concentration of students that have um special needs or who require additional resources. Um, and they tend to be really clustered in a lot of our transformation schools. And so when are we thinking about really interrogating our assignment process? Um, as we're moving forward. And again, I'm separating it from the transportation pieces, but I also think that it's very much combined.
Uh, to you, Chair. I, so that's exactly right. And Dan, I, I know you can speak a little bit to the ongoing work of the internal committee, which has our stakeholders, including enrollment at the table. But I think to your point, you know, this is, um, as we're moving on inclusion, um, for instance, with special education, uh, uh, initially, um, it will take a, a bit of time before you start to see tipping points of having more options closer to where students live. But once that starts to happen, then we will have less of needing to transport students across the city to be able to access an appropriate, uh, their appropriate special education services. That's one of the things that was called out in both the special education report, but it was also called out in the transportation report. So we're really trying to kind of highlight where we're seeing commonality between the reports and then tackling those areas. However, some of this is also that we have to operationalize the program. Um, similar with uh Green New Deal and merging or versions or closures. But when, once those start to happen, that will again put um uh more opportunity closer for, and meaning less bus time, uh, in theory for students. So in addition to kind of the, what I would say, operational efficiencies that Dan and his team are already working on, um, of where not to kind of duplicate routes and create shorter amounts of time on the bus for students. Additionally, we are also trying to build the programming up through our priorities as a district with the same intent, which is to provide better quality and options for parents closer so that they don't, we don't have to transport students as far. There's also some recommendations in the report around looking at how, how far in practice, um, for instance, a mile versus a mile and a half. Um, and so we're looking at that as well, like as we run simulations to say, what would that save us? What would that glean us? Um, in providing transportation. So that's something that Dan and the transportation team are running as well as simulations. Dan, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that?
No, I, I don't, I don't, I think, I think, I think what you've shared in terms of the transportation pieces is fine. I think aside from that, like, we don't think about, for example, high schools, right? Like, we don't think about transportation in high schools in the same way. But we know that there are high schools that will generate a large number of students uh who just get assigned to them, right? So some folks just get assigned to a school, wasn't really their top anything. Um, and we also know that there is a large concentration of students who require just additional resources at a number of our high schools. And so I'm just, I'm thinking more of the academic components that you were just mentioning. Um, so appreciate you walking me through um some of that. It, it just reminds me that there's just a lot of work in a lot of different areas that needs to be done.
Yeah, that's right. No, and, and through your chair, the, um, I think at the high school level, us beginning with ninth grade and looking at inclusion in the ninth grade is the beginning of the building blocks that were recommended out of the council's report. Uh, because most of our transportation, for instance, at the high school level is MBTA. However, there are door-to-door and there are corner-to-corner at the high school level. Um, and similarly for SEI students, so uh or MLE students. So I think as well as we build out inclusion at the high school level and start to build that forward, that opens up more opportunities for students that requires less of the transportation pieces for them. As more and more students, uh, is more and more high schools, um, build out programs that are accessible to all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Alkins.
Um, thank you. And uh, like my colleague, I do want to extend congratulations uh to the teachers um for a, a, a monumental achievement. Um, Lord knows, you all are not just teachers. There's a number of different hats and other roles that you all play. Um, and so, um, thank you for your continued dedication, um, and your, um, continued excellence. Um, thank you, Superintendent, uh, for the report. Uh, I think my questions, I, I think more are minor uh around, um, just providing a little bit more insight into some of the strategies for uh re-engagement um that you all are using, um, to really change those numbers. Um, I, I'd be very curious as to hear, you know, what, what individual schools have been doing um along those lines.
Sure. Um, so actually, um, today I had the pleasure of actually going out and seeing a lot of our alternative ed or what I call ed options. Um, I think, I, I think there's, um, Um, I think, I, I think there's, um. At the school levels, I think. The, uh, focus on strong NTSS processes. And training of staff along with. The structure of student support teams are going to be critical. To catching students at the beginning when they're struggling and then having an appropriate intervention menu to support. Um, so that's kind of, that is the, the goal and for next year, sort of as we look to it. We've been working on that this year and laying the foundations for those. But I think using the summer to be able to train and then certainly for next year, making sure those structures are up. Functional running and the menu of interventions is robust. I think there's students that fall into the need intervention. Uh, now because they're either overaged or undercredited. Um, they're expressing already with chronic absenteeism, um, which then eventually can also turn into some behaviors. Uh, for, for those students. We've kind of moved the rec to a mobilization where they're going to the high schools. Sometimes as low as seventh grade up to twelve. Going to those high schools and they're, um, meeting with the, with the families, the student. Um, and the, the counselor, whoever the adults are that know that student well. To look at where the student is, to look at what's been tried and then to be able to offer. A menu of options for that student, which could be, um. Alternative or ed options within that high school, which we would call like a tier three. Or it could be outside of that for some students, if they're looking for change of placement. Or to be able, if they're, say, overage, needing to accelerate the process. Um, for that to all work, and I think it is, you know, by, by going to the schools and bringing the resource to the students. We're catching a lot more students than relying on them just to come down to the rec, right? Then there's also the students who have dropped out. Or timed out. And for those students, there's a lot of re-engagement through our attendance officers, um, through the rec staff. Uh, of calling, door knocking, really trying to get in to, to get back at the students to bring them back in. What, what we're really kind of focused on, and it's both budget, but it's also just in organization structure. Is building the menu out of opportunities for the students. You know, right now, we have, um. We've, we're, because we've had such attentionality of bringing kids back, we're now. Running up against a shortage of seats in ed options. Because we brought students back. So on the one hand, that's a good thing. Best thing is that they don't ever need that. But right now, that's, that's a good thing. However, we need to develop additional seats and more importantly, we need to develop seats in areas that we don't currently have capacity. So for instance, in the middle grades, where we definitely see from the pandemic. Students who might be fourteen in the seventh grade. Or, you know, fifteen in the eighth grade. Who are already overage, going into high school, probably have skill gap. Already have attendance, um, crisis going on. We need to be able to intervene in the middle grades. So building out middle school seats that are different than code of conduct is a going to be, it's one of our big priorities. Uh, because if we can get the kids on track, then they can re-enter high school in a more normal way. In, at the high school level, uh, seats for special education, so students that, um, have an ed plan. Um, but who also need a different, beyond the ed plan, additional supports or services. Um, certainly for multilingual learners, uh, particularly overage multilingual learners. Um, who might have the tension of working and need a completely different type of schedule because they're already nineteen or twenty years old. Um, but they're still, you know, they're still enrolled with us. So now we're really kind of getting into act, the access of what we have, what we need based on the students. This all has to be from what the kids need. And so looking at profile of the student, talking with the adults that service them and work with them, talking with their parents. And then building that menu. So we're in a very active cycle between now and June to get that to happen. The summer will be a big recovery period for us, additionally. Um, both in bringing students back, but also in making sure that students who are behind right now have a mechanism to catch up so that they can start the year strong.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and first of all, my. A profound congratulations and thanks to the teachers that we honored tonight for becoming board certified. The amount of work on their behalf and the support by their school leaders, um, and the union. Is incredible. This is, you know, we, I was thinking we honored teachers at three different times during the year. We honor those that. Win Teacher of the Year or Educators of the Year. Um, we honor the, uh, everyone within BPS who works to reach the highest level of their, at their educational level. And, and receiving their doctorate in education. Um, and then we also honor the board certified and it's very appropriate. We do each because it, the amount of. Hard work and dedication. And, and I forget whether it was, um, President Tang or Superintendent Skipper who said at the beginning. You know, as we have challenges with creating and, and retaining teachers, here we have folks working hard to reach the next level in their chosen profession. So I just want to. You know, add, add to the chorus of profound thanks and appreciation for those that we honored tonight. And I love the wide range of schools. I honestly think this may have been the biggest group we have seen in years. And I love the wide range of schools that we saw, both the grade level. The specialty, and we had several, uh, district staff in there as well. So congratulations to all them. Superintendent, regarding your report on transformation schools, I was wondering if you could dig in for me a, a little bit more? I was struck by. The work that's being done on, um, chronic absenteeism. And you mentioned that the rate had dropped from fifteen to eleven in the transformation schools, but that is still, you know, not. At the level of the non-transformational schools. And knowing how important an issue. Chronic absenteeism is. Could you just dig in a little bit more, please, on the work that's being done around that?
Sure.
And. You know. What else needs to be done? I know this is an important issue to you as well. You know it very well from your time as a school leader and as heading high schools. So if you could just dig in a little bit more on that particular topic, please?
Sure, absolutely. And also, um, through chair, uh, 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 Director Saban, I know, um, has done a lot of work here. So I also want to showcase. His work and give him an opportunity to be able to address this as well. You know, I think, um. You know, with the chronic absenteeism, if students aren't in school, they can't access what we give them. And so they just fall further behind. It's a cycle. Um, so really, uh, the, with the absenteeism, it's working hand-in-hand with the. Moving in the regional model with the, uh, supervisory attendance. Um, we're adding resource into that and have added, and, and are working closely to make sure that. Each region has additional support so that though, particularly for the transformation schools, that the supervisors of attendance. Can work in partnership with those schools around wh- when students are first expressing absence. Um, before it gets to even the point of chronic, the interventions start, they begin, they're brought up at student support. There's data, it's, it, we're monitoring to make sure that it's going in the right direction. Um, it's, it's, you know, we include it in our panorama data, um, and then there's an actual plan for attendance that gets put in place for the student. Um, you know, I think when we see a drop like fifteen to eleven, that's significant because it's on average, right? So it's across that group. So that, that's a significant amount, and especially this year. Where no matter, um, what district you hear speaking, even at the state level. Everybody is acknowledging that the chronic absenteeism is as bad, if not even worse than it's been from the pandemic. So we're still seeing that residual impact with the students. Um, but I do think that the regional model is, um, is really kind of helping to support this and having a transformation unit. With an exact direct to really hone down in this. Work with those attendance officers, incentivize, we have an attendance campaign that's been going on. And really incentivize and use the data to inform and have that conversation and the communication. Ongoing with parents to get students in. Those are kind of all of the key pieces, um, that kind of help. A student from not reaching chronic level. And if they do reach chronic level, not having it go into the thirty, forty, fifty days out. Um. Mike, do you want to, or, um, Dr. Saban, do you want to, uh, talk anything specific about an example? Um, that you want to call out with a transformation school that you think was, um, particularly impactful?
Thank you Superintendent Skipper. Um, I think there are many schools doing. Great work on attendance. I think the thing I would like to, um. Emphasize about attendance is. That the best attendance work happens. Not on the systems level with the twenty-eight transformation schools. It happens within each school. And the strategy that we're taking is that within these, um, quality school plans that every school develops, there is a school-based attendance plan for every school. And we're working closely and the, the regional structure and the district is working closely with each school to develop a plan in that school. And. Those plans generally encompass two parts. Improving the sense of belonging in the school in general, so students want to be there. And then forging the strongest possible connections with families and at-risk students to ensure that. There's a quick reaction, um, when they're, when they're out. Uh, one school that comes to mind as an example, we've noticed that. For example, at the Umana School where there've been a lot of attendance improvements, there's very strong messaging there from the leadership team to the entire community. About the importance of attendance. It's a weekly reminder going out to every member of the community that this is a priority for us. And we're all working together on this. But there are many good practices going on throughout the network and beyond the transformation network. It is an ongoing concern and I'm glad that the district is focusing on this because clearly academic progress and success really can't come without improving our attendance rates.
So. Director Saban and Superintendent Skipper, thank you for that. I agree particularly Director Saban, what you were pointing out at the end, which is the communication with families. Is critical so that, you know, you can get involvement and engagement and buy-in. I want to point out, you know, many of us get, get, uh, letters once a month or once a quarter from your energy provider. It could be gas, it could be oil, it could be electric. Where, you know, you open it up, you think it's a bill and instead it's comparing how you're doing versus your neighbors and saying, well, forty, forty, forty-four percent of your neighbors, you know, are more energy efficient than you or that type of thing. I, I know that sounds crazy, but. There are actually districts in the country that are using that exact same philosophy. And they are identifying students that are chronically absent or at risk of being chronically absent and sending messages to the home. Where the student's attendance is being compared to their peers. And while I recognize that everyone's circumstance is different. I point this out because in fact they have seen measurable lift. In attendance. When that happens, parents gets, it's another piece of information for parents. Because it's very easy to think of a one-off excuse, my child was sick that day, you know, I had a work emergency, so on and so forth, and I fully understand that. But when they start to see the impact relative to. The other students in the classroom, it helps bring it home. And so I'm wondering if you've explored, um, anything like that? In, in how we're messaging. In other words, are you exploring different creative ways? Beyond just the language issue, which is also important. But different ways to message to families when you said Director and Saban, Saban, the importance of being in school?
Superintendent Skipper, do you want to lead the answer on that or, or would you like me to comment?
I, I mean, I think, um, you can certainly talk about in the transformation schools, like any promising practice. I think written communication, um, does, you know, we do issue. Um, when, when a student is kind of reaching threshold around the attendance. Uh, I like the idea of, um, in some ways, being able to kind of give a sense of comparison of where a student is. Um. Some of the most impactful things I've seen is actually when the parent, the student in the. And the educator from the school sit down and they actually, um, chronic, like actually give a breakdown of how much time in teaching and learning. The students missing.
Yeah.
Um, you know, sometimes parents, um, understandably, you know. Will lose track of how much a student is out because of sickness or, you know, sickness in the house or whatever. But when you say to a parent, like the student's been out ten days. Ten days times, you know, six hours of instruction a day. And you start breaking it down into the minutes. And then you show the parent. The impact it's having on the academic performance of the student. There's something in that process that clicks. And all of a sudden, attendance becomes something that a parent attaches onto. So I think, you know, at the high school level, it becomes a little bit, um. More difficult. Because understandably, as students get older. Parents are often turning attention back to students that are younger. Um, and there is like a responsibility thing that like, you know. My kid is sixteen or fifteen and needs to get to school. From, and so going through the parent is important. But at that point, it's also starting to really talk with the student in a real talk way. About what they're missing, understand why they're missing it. What is the root cause? Mi- you know, sometimes something as simple. As a text to a student. Or a phone call to a student that you missed them. That they weren't there that day and you noticed. I've had kids say, I, I didn't think anybody noticed. But to know that somebody did, all of a sudden can change that student's perspective of why it's important to come. I've also seen, we used to do this in Tech Boston where kids would do campaigns with each other. So if a kid was out, they'd all call their friend, where are you? Come here, you need to be in. And that can also help a student to motivate a student to be able to come in. So getting to the root cause of kind of why the student is out is also important.
Superintendent, I also, and I want to be respectful of time, so I'll just make this comment very quickly, um. Particularly about the high school students, you know, I've also heard about students who are going and spending the day in Boston Public Library because they don't want to be in the school, but they're not going to be at home or, or wherever. And. You know, I'm wondering, are we like engaging the re-engagement center? Because we have specialists there who are really good at. Talking with students about is the root cause because you don't like school or because you don't like this school? Or is there an issue with the teacher or another student or? A family member or a friend that has you, you know, not going back into the school? And how do we help you with alternatives? So be engaging the specialists at the re-engagement center, not just on those who have dropped out, which is, I know what their focus is, but also on those who are chronically absent?
Yes. So, uh, through chair, so one big change we made at the beginning of this year. Was instead of expecting the student to come to the re-engagement center. We have the re-engagement center going out and doing mobile, um, meetings. Where they work with the school, they develop a list of students of concern because of attendance. And then, uh, they work with the family, they contact the family. And the power of getting the family, the student and kind of the person that they, the student is close to at the school. Gather to talk about what's really going on. How do we solve that? If it is a situation where they need a change of placement because of schedule, because they're behind, because they're overage, whatever it might be. Um, that can happen then in that meeting. It doesn't require then having to go to the re-engagement center. Um, and so we've found. You know, anywhere between fifteen, twenty students at the, you know, the high schools, the re-engagement center can get through. Talk with the parent and then that's resulted in a change of placement. In some cases, there's a, alternative or what I call an ed option at the school. And, um, they're working with a smaller cohort of students, needs a flexible schedule. Um, or who need a, a, you know, might be some remote learning. Um, and so those programs have a designation. Um, as all, as kind of al- alternative. Brighton has one, Charleston High has one, East Boston has one. And so in that case, it may be just talking to the student about changing into that versus their regular schedule. Until they're able to either stabilize. Um, or they're able, they complete, you know, whichever. Uh, so that, that is, but that, that conversation. Is so important to have. And I think rec going out to the schools to have that conversation has been a big step this year. That's impacted several hundred students. Um, otherwise those students, we would be waiting for them to drop out. And then go and re-engage, um, which is not a good, not a good process.
Right. Excellent. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Alkins?
Um, yes, uh. Thank you Superintendent for. Or for that response, um. Yeah, the, the personal touch that you can offer. And I mean, I'm dating myself. I. I, you know, the, the scene of Edward Rooney calling Ferris's like mother and just being very transparent. About. Absentee, like just how many times that he had been absent from school. Um. You know, but of course the rapport that. Our. That our community can develop with families goes a long way with re-engaging. Um, along those lines. What is the re-engagement center, uh? Thinking about in terms of. Career path, um, options and partnerships with particularly high schools? Because I believe for a lot of students, um, uh, the issue is also. What's the purpose of education? If, you know, if I'm also thinking about. To some extent, um, like putting food on my family's table and having to work too. So what are the career options and pathways that we're pairing? Um, or getting, getting them into the school system so that students actually can see that direct connection?
Yeah. So, so this is, um, I could go on and on in this one, but, um, so three chairs. So, uh, so first of all. I think the early college and career as, um, as a, it's kind of twin powers is something we're enacting for all. Is something we're enacting for all the schools. But it is, it is true that in the alt ed setting or the ed option setting. That sometimes we forget that's actually one of the more important things we can do and actualize in those settings. So that's exactly what we're doing. There's no reason a student can't take early college classes out of that setting. Uh, there's no reason a student can't, we can't uh, launch particular career paths. So that where students look across some of the ad options, if there's something that interests them, they have that opportunity as well. Some of our external partners like ABCD, um, youth build, which is, is going, um, going to be an active one for us. They have it built in actually to kind of like the, the core way that they do the business. Um, so they have internships and career skill as uh, credible as something that, that students can get their credit for. Um, we are at the point now where we need to build that back into. Um, the ad options that we develop or have developed. Um, so a good example is, uh, and I'll just use the Brighton one. Um, you know, there's X amount of seats at Brighton, which is like a, it's a, it's a, for better terms, it's like a diploma plus kind of program format. Um, but there's also an early college, so there are some students that are in that, and then they're also actualizing early college classes. That's what we want. Right, like we, we want to be able to have students have the most opportunities as possible. Regardless of whether they're in a traditional high school. Or they're in a, a high school that has a, a tier three program, or if they're in one of our external placement programs. So. I think this is going to be an area that um, I will welcome to come back in the spring and present to school committee. Um, with Ted Lombardi and Carlos, like it, as everybody's really actively working hard to build this out. Corey McCarthy is another person that will be good to get into the mix on this, um, because you know, he's also out. Thinking about and recruiting, what are the kinds of enrichment programs that we can also attach? To both ad options, but also more broadly to our uh, seven to twelve schools. As ways for our young people to actualize um, opportunities, gain skills. Um, and start thinking about what future looks like. In very different ways, very different connections. Um, and that's really thinking about community partners, nonprofits in the communities that right now we don't tap in a systemic way. So I think this is going to be actually some of the most exciting work. Um, this is certainly impactful work that I have. Um, seen over my career uh, with high school students, and I would say all the way back to sixth and seventh graders. Because by the time of students in sixth grade, seventh grade, they're telling you a lot. They're telling you a lot, it's just a question of if we're listening.
Thank you. Um, Superintendent, I have a, just a couple of questions. One, I. Heard you say briefly as you were talking a little bit about um. The busing um, transportation issues you're beginning to think about, maybe. You would move from, you know, a mile to a mile and a half. Um, distance, but you know, I just know from having spoken to parents, parents are already fearful. Of a move like that. Um, the, just because of the logistics. For some of them who are trying to get several children off to different schools, et cetera. But also some of their own needs in terms of. Their physical ability to. Get a child from that kind of distance. So I'm hoping that we. We'll do some, you know, cautionary thinking around that.
So through your chair, so actually, it's not that we're actively thinking about it, it was brought up in the Council of Great City Schools. They flagged it in the report. That's based on how other districts are sized nationally approach it. We actually have a little bit of data where we've, uh, and Dan, I don't, I don't know if um, this is easily accessible to you, but. We had some data where when we cut down on the. Uh, length of the route, and I, I don't actually think it, it showed us that we saved a considerable amount of time. Um, if my recollection serves me correctly.
You are absolutely correct Superintendent, yeah, um, the. The, the limiting factor in most cases on, on routes at a very high level is the. The first stop on the route and the total length of the route, and that's the students who are farther away. And so, yeah, our, our analysis, which is a year or so outdated at this point, but I think still generally holds is that. Those, you know, the students within the mile to a mile and a half are not the ones um. Are not what is, you know, the operationally challenging point for transportation. And then I, I think just, just more generally, um. Would note that any of these kind of policy points that were brought up in the CGCS report, you know, it's incredibly important for us to make sure that. Any conversations there are, you know, community driven and include significant community engagement. And so. These are things that, as the superintendent said, the CGCS team flagged, um. And, yeah. We have.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's important on any of these reports to realize, and I think Dr. Hart kind of stated this. Because they put it in there. Didn't mean that they were recommending it specifically for us. It was a consideration. Um, so some are generic, and then there are some that like looking at us, our data. Uh, where we are in landscape, they're like, no, you really should consider that because we've seen in other districts. That fit your size with this kind of issue going on, where that's, where that, you know, has made a difference. Uh, but I think in the case of the mileage, and this is true on several of their transportation. They were just very generic.
Yeah. Um. A topic that I know is very hard for us to bring up in Boston, but it, you know, but as we're looking at. New schools, um, transportation, et cetera. My question always goes back to. At what point will we be willing to have a conversation with our neighborhoods? About whether or not busing. Still is something that people are interested in. We are not the city we were fifty years ago. When this was necessary, we're spending a lot of money. Moving a lot of kids around a very crowded city and not really being happy. At the end of the ride. And so, you know, we're, we're fixing a problem without looking at the root of it. And so, you know, as we are having the Green New Deal. Conversations, hub school. Conversations, um, where are the neighborhood conversations? With the families that now live in neighborhoods. I know I have several friends who have moved into Boston. Um, from other places, see a school and a shop when they find out their child can't enroll. In the school. Begin to explore our very convoluted system of enrollment and make a choice of. Medco private school parochial, because they feel like I just can't deal with the uncertainty. So we all know this is a well fact, you know, how in all of these myriad of conversations we are having, having about. Changes that will be coming into the district. Wh- where does that conversation fit, or does it?
Yeah, so I mean, I think that there's, there, there is a. There's a study that we're, we're doing with MIT. Um, that I think will highlight some of this. Um, but at the same time, I think it's also the, you know, reason why the Green New Deal is so important as a community process. As we attempt to strengthen regions of schooling. Um, because then that really. Uh, I think gives confidence to parents in the quality of their school, in the buildings. In the programming that it's more comprehensive of what we're running. And then you layer into an inclusion where then it becomes. Um, you don't have to go to a particular school to get access as a parent of a special education student. But that can happen in any of the schools that are near you. So I think it's one of these things that we have to keep our focus. On improving the quality. Of making sure that Green New Deal holds to the promise. Um, now under the directorship of Dell. Um, to make sure that that is grounded in, in an important community, um, uh, open, transparent conversation. Um, and as. Inclusion is rolling out, as the strengthening of the academic programming is happening in our schools and we're lifting the system. And as Green New Deal is taking shape. I think those are the things that then strengthen regions and give parents confidence. That in their local schools that are close to them, they will find what they need for their children. So I think it's at that, during that time and as we're doing that work. That we start having conversations about finding solutions closer to home. Um, but we have some work to do in our system for that to happen.
Okay. My other question, and maybe when we see the, the report on transformation schools. We might have a little bit more of this conversation. Gets them looking at who goes to our transformation schools, what are the demographics? Of our transformation schools versus our non-transformation. Schools, we know we are a district of children with great needs. And my question are, are more children with greater needs concentrated in our transformation schools? Than across our district as a whole?
Yeah, so I just want to confirm with um, Director Saban that that data. And the breakdown demographically that I, that I know that Chair Robinson always asks for. Um, that that is going to be included in the full report.
Uh, Superintendent Skipper, that is a, a great question. It was in our initial deck and we will. Make sure we provide that to you. There was not a slide with that in this particular deck, but we have the data.
Okay, great, that's wonderful, thank you. And I don't know if there's any, uh, Director Saban, I don't know if there's any trend that you can share with Chair Robinson. Um, of what we saw with our demographics of transformation schools versus non. Uh, or if that's just best left to the deck.
No, I, I think it's easy uh, to say that overall as a network, there is a concentration of higher need in the transformation schools. There are a very wide variety of schools though, from small elementary and high schools to quite large schools, and they're. In all neighborhoods and very different from each other. But in general, they can be characterized as having. A high concentration of multilingual learners and/or students with disabilities.
Okay, is that because of parent choice? Or a result of our enrollment or a combination of both? Or just what those schools offer in terms of programming? I'm just trying to understand how kids are landing concentrated. In schools with great need and is, you know, are there ways that we can relook at that? In terms of.
That, excuse me. I think that question is more complicated as to the. Ten or twenty year process through which all of the different. Programs have ended up in their current locations. I don't think I should comment on that.
Okay. Thank you, fair enough, thank you. Um, is there any further discussion? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Credit Hernandez. Ms. LaPera?
Yes.
Ms. Planko Garcia? Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comments. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers. Students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee. On pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time. But are referred to later, to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time. But may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have sixteen speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak. And I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not resign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic. Are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair. And refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comments. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with John Mudd. Followed by Michael Heishman. Marie's Gomes. Helena Gomes. And Suzanne McGlon. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Mr. Mudd?
Am I there?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime education advocate in Boston. Uh, BPS says it as a commitment to expand. Access to native language and to increase bilingual education programming for multilingual learners. But when I look at the. It shows that the largest single increase in funding for bilingual education. Is to add thirty-eight ESL teachers at a cost of over six million dollars. ESL teachers are usually used to support English learners in general education classes. In addition, the enrollment data over the past five years. Shows there has been an increase in the placement of these students. In English immersion, general education classes and a decline in their placement in ELL programs. What is going on for multilingual learner, learners in this FY twenty-four budget? When the biggest growth in funding for multilingual learners is adding thirty-eight new ESL teachers. Is BPS planning to continue the practice? Of increasing the placement of multilingual students in general education classes next year? That would seem to be exactly the opposite of what a commitment to expand access to native language would lead to. There is also a six point three million strategic investment for multilingual education.
Excuse me, Mr. Mudd, slow down just a little bit, please.
I'll try.
Thank you.
There is also a six point three million dollar strategic investment for multilingual education in the proposed budget. There are no details in the budget presentation given to the school committee. But at the ELL task force meeting, we were told verbally. That about one-third of this will go to fund social workers for SLIF students. None of this sounds as though there is a major commitment to the expansion of access to native language. For multilingual students. In the FY twenty-four budget as implied by the BPS policy. The school committee or strongly recommended by the ELL task force. It invites three questions. One, how does the FY twenty-four budget support expanded access to native language? Two, why is BPS adding thirty-eight ESL positions? And three, what exactly is the six point three million targeted investment? For multilingual education being used for and why? There are many other questions and there may be good answers for all of them. And I would hope you could ask these questions and get the answers to them for all of us in the public. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Our next speaker is Michael Heishman.
Mike Heishman, Beja, Dorchester. On August twenty-fourth, fifteen high-ranking retired BPS educators of color. Had sent a letter to the new superintendents. Protesting against the targeting harassment and firing of anti-racist black and brown central office leaders. Great harm has been and continues to be done. The superintendent had engaged in the cover-up. Because she did not inform us for months. Ms. Skipper still has no intention of informing us of the truth. Of what she has done to the leadership at Central Office. The public only became informed on October twenty-seventh. When three of Boston citizens, including myself, blew the whistle during testimony at your meeting. It was only after that meeting that Ms. Skipper told us about the letter. And that she had quickly engaged an outside lawyer to conduct an investigation. To investigate herself. That was a conflict of interest. The school committee should have ordered and been in charge of this investigation. I've repeatedly requested that organizational demographic charts of central office be released to the public. We have a right to see what central office looked like. When Dr. Casilius was our superintendent. What it looked like when Ms. Skipper took office and what it looked like today. My repeated requests have been met with silence. On February twelfth, I filed a freedom of information request to the BPS. Asking for three demographic organizational charts of central office. The last chart when Dr. Casilius was the superintendent. The skipper's first chart after she became superintendent. And the most recent chart. At your February first meeting, Chair Robinson asked Ms. Skipper for an update of the investigation. At your February first meeting, Chair Robinson asked Ms. Skipper for an update of the investigation. The superintendent responded that the initial meeting had happened the previous week. The first meeting the previous week? She also said that she was in control of what the attorney would cover and would not be investigated. The conflict of interest and cover-up continues. Ms. Skipper had dropped a bomb, and once again, the school committee pretended not to hear the explosion. The whitewash continues. The cover-up of the racist attack on black and brown anti-racist staff, central office staff continues. The silence of the school committee continues. The BPS must have the top to bottom become an anti-racist institution. Having black and brown's leadership at central office is a necessity.
Twenty seconds.
You continue to protect the superintendent and continue to betray your responsibility to our community. Your silence enables white supremacy and racism, school committee members, and your silence and your betrayal. On a positive note, twenty new electric school buses. Congratulations. Hooray for our mayor, our superintendent, and our school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Maurice, Helena, and Suzanne are not signed into the meeting. So our next speakers will be Ruby Reyes, Cheryl Buckman, Joanne Freeman Fanfan, Jonathan Haynes, and Ariel Leonhard. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Ruby?
My name is Ruby Reyes, and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. Central office leaders and school committee members keep talking about fiscal cliffs and having to make difficult decisions. Where are conversations around detailed, responsible financial planning? Where are the comprehensive plans developed by central office leadership to ensure that fiscal cliffs and difficult decisions don't continue to fall on school communities? Families and educators will be forced to have to figure out how to deal with the difficult decisions they didn't make. How is negligent recklessness an acceptable standard for central office leadership? We are moving into our final year of ESAR. The human capital staff are unable to keep up with the demand of spending ESAR funding, and now central office and school committee leadership expect school communities to prepare for difficult decisions and hard choices. Why are difficult decisions and careful planning at the central office level not happening? Where is the Council of Great City Schools identifying ways of addressing central office malfeasance and dysfunction? With the end of the school year in a few short months, are BPS families to believe that the human capital office will suddenly be able to hire and purchase materials and supplies so that ESAR funds can make it to the school level? The budget presentation at the last school committee meeting was vague at best. Central office leadership shared general topics as investments, sharing that soft landing funds move to ESAR funding. What was not shared was any kind of planning to bridge the fiscal cliff. Rather, central office leadership has decided to drive off the cliff and leave school communities to figure out how to make the difficult decisions of cleaning up the mess. The soft landing funds oftentimes serve as a bridge for school communities, yet there are no plans shared as to what those bridge supports will be for school communities. When, where, and who hold central office leadership accountable when it is okay to talk about fiscal cliffs and difficult decisions rather than careful and thoughtful planning ahead? In addition, as we continue to live through the pandemic, where is the financial commitment and investment in creating a black student agenda, system-wide restorative justice, and literacy support such as a reading specialist at every school? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, excuse me, is Cheryl Buckman.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a member of FAMCOSA. I'm a parent to a fourth-grade BPS special needs student who attends Dever in Dorchester. I'm a resident of South Boston. My questions are, where does my child's school fall into the Green New Deal? And are all of the one hundred and twenty-one schools going to be green and friendly? BPS is one of the oldest Boston, uh, oldest public schools in the country and largest in this largest district in Massachusetts. BPS is home to one of its very first public schools, Boston Line. The average BPS school is over eighty years old. Boston Public has about forty-six thousand students, eighty-five percent are of color, and over seventy percent are low-income. Many decades of disinvestment are linked to racial inequities and injustices which have resulted in many of these buildings to crumble. If we're going to envision BPS going into the twenty-first century and beyond, these schools need to be adaptable, not just for students, but those students with disabilities. For example, my son's school does not have a safe play area for students to enjoy. And when it rains, it's flooded for days. The classrooms are outdated for teaching and students to learn. We need to make buildings universal and comfortable, adequate for teaching and for students to get proper learning. Another problem is the lack of proper ventilation. We know that three fourths of BPS buildings don't have adequate ventilations, and they lack of the the good ventilation that is associated with many airborne viruses, toxic chemicals, and agents that are left in the air and can trigger asthma, plus make it hard to learn in this type of condition. Boston faces significant challenges due to the climate changing and the precedency level rise by the year twenty seventy. The time is now to bring everyone to the table to make sure that the next several generations have a safe and healthy way of learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jonathan Haynes.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Haynes. I'm a resident of Belmont, a school nurse in the Boston Public Schools, and an elected member of the Nurse Faculty Senate. School nurses in Boston, including our nurse leaders at health services like our colleagues everywhere, are suffering the ongoing effects of the trauma of working as a nurse in the COVID pandemic. As a BTU rep for nurses, I often hear about how COVID has taken an emotional and physical toll on my colleagues. I hear about nurses who can't sleep at night worrying about what they have to do the next day. I hear about nurses who've had to start blood pressure medication or who have GI problems as a result of the stress they've been put under in their work. It's always true that nurses feel deeply that our students, their families, and our work colleagues rely on us to help them to be safe and healthy. This is the lived experiences of our nurses. When nurses say the workload in their school is too high to meet the needs of all their students, we must listen to them and be willing to take action. Otherwise, we're continuing the trauma. Today, we have schools that do not have a safe level of nurse staffing, but because of the current budget process, we're not flexible enough to meet the changing needs of the students in these schools. We base staffing levels on projections of enrollment from the previous year, and we do not have a clear process for adjusting nurse staffing to the real workloads of nurses once the school year begins. This also means we do not meet the changing needs of students as the year progresses. For example, a student newly diagnosed with diabetes needs extra support. Extra support means time not just with the student, but also time with staff, time with family, time with medical providers, all of which needs to be documented in the student's chart by the nurse, which also takes time. All of this adds to nurse workload. The National Association of School Nurses states, "School nurse workloads should be evaluated on at least an annual basis to meet the health and safety needs of school communities." This meeting is not the time to name certain schools, nor is the school committee the place to work out the details of the next steps. However, it is imperative that the school committee understand that budgetary action must be taken now so that we as a district can truly meet the healthcare needs of all of our students this year. There's nothing better you could do to begin to support the emotional needs of our nurses as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ariel Leonhart, followed by Stephen Benjamin, Rachel Pedo, Ashley Owings, Ty Tran, Gillian Adams, and Alexa Young. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Ariel?
Hello, hi. Um. Okay, so good evening. My name is Ariel Lenhart. I'm a resident of Brighton. I am a full-time grade six teacher at Up Academy Dorchester. I'm also the wife of Mr. Michael Lenhart, who works at Mary Lyne High School, and mother to Doolin Lenhart, who is ten months old. The delay in our appropriate back pay is simply unacceptable. This delay is after we patiently waited for the contract to finally be settled and with multiple delays in receiving retro pay. To see that I will be getting a portion of what is owed to me is yet another slap in the face. UAD is an extended-year, extended-day school, and we fought hard for equal pay for equal work. Additionally, cost of living in Boston is continuously rising, and as city employees, it is egregious that it is growing more and more difficult to live in the city that my husband and I both work for. Doolin is also in daycare, which even at a discount costs almost as much as our rent. The delay in our Schedule A back pay is a degradation of our profession, particularly during a nationwide teacher shortage. One would think that the school committee and BPS would want to take all the steps possible to show teachers how appreciated their hard work is, but instead, it has been the complete opposite. I cannot think of many other fields that would be expected to continue to work with joy and authenticity while also not being paid appropriately. While the financial strain on my family is very real, it should not matter that I have a husband or a child. The money belongs to me. It belongs to my colleagues. We've already earned it. Lots of lip service has been paid to how strong we are and how valued we are as teachers, but if this is true, the Boston Public Schools will put their money where their mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Benjamin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephen Benjamin. I am a resident of Roslindale, and I am a reading specialist at the Dearborn, a transformation and turnaround school, big topic of discussion tonight. And I first want to say thank you that the retro pay is finally being distributed out for most folks in this week's paycheck. I know that a lot of educators in my school were very appreciative and thankful to see that that is finally coming through. But I'm here testifying tonight because I want to make sure that you, as the school committee and the superintendent, are aware that there are many educators out in the district, myself included, who are still waiting on unpaid stipends for work we have done that is a totally separate issue from the retro pay issue. So to give you some context, at the Dearborn, we're a turnaround and transformation school, so in each paycheck, we typically receive two stipends, one for our extended school day and one for the additional professional development hours we do throughout the year. Together, they total just under three hundred dollars. At the beginning of this year, the first pay period, not a single staff member received those stipends. To be fair, I'm pretty sure this was an accident and payroll responded very quickly to resolve it. However, we've since discovered that there were some new staff members that didn't know how to navigate the system so early in the year, or folks who have been hired on since that time who did not automatically have those stipends added into their paychecks and are still waiting to see that issue resolved. For me personally, I had a job change within the Dearborn this year, still a BTU role, though, that resulted in those stipends being bumped off of my paycheck, and despite the fact that I've spoken with my principal supervisors, filed a ticket in the Beacon site over two months ago, I still have not received any communication whatsoever around when that money is going to be paid out, and by my math, with twelve pay periods so far this year, I am owed almost three thousand six hundred dollars, and that number is only getting higher as the pay periods continue to tick by. So again, thank you for the work of getting the retro pay finally paid out. I really do appreciate it, and I hope that you, as the school committee, will continue to advocate for those tickets on Beacon to get resolved and for more transparent payroll practices in the future, because I think that if this district is going to continue to attract and retain high-quality educators, we really need to make sure that these basic issues like getting paid for the work you've done are resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Pedo.
Hi, my name is Rachel Pedo, and I'm a teacher at the David A. Ellis School in Roxbury. I've been a proud BPS teacher for more than ten years. I am very frustrated with the way we've been treated in terms of being paid. I'm pleased that the retroactive pay issue has been resolved. However, we're still far from resolving all of the payroll issues. The Ellis School was given transformation status about four years ago, and as a result of our hard work, we were given a grant from the state. With that grant and the resulting MOA between the union and the district, we agreed to do, among other things, three full days of additional hours of professional development during the summer. The contract said that we would be paid for those hours, and the rate of payment would increase with wage increases. The contract expired at the end of the school year last year. However, the district argued that it was in force until August thirty-first, and we were required to do yet another three days of professional development this past summer. So that would be a fourth summer of professional development for a three-year contract. This same contract stated we would be paid each year by December thirty-first. The same contract that the district argued adamantly was still in force. The first year, we were paid on time. The second year, we were not. Last year, we were not paid until April. We still haven't been paid for this past summer, despite the fact that the stipends were approved and sent to payroll on September twenty-second. We also have never received the wage increases, and except for the first year, the amount we received was less than the original amount promised in the contract. The district insisted that our contract was still active, argued with us all summer, and held us responsible for our end, and yet they continue to ignore their responsibilities. When will they be held accountable? Where is our money? Additionally, none of our new staff members this year have received their badges to enter the building. This means that not only are they not identifiable as staff, although by now we know who they all are, but more concerning is that they still cannot enter the building when they arrive to prepare for the day. They're standing outside, sometimes in the cold and the rain, waiting for someone to open a door. This is unacceptable, particularly since we've been told that all badge issues have been resolved. This is clearly not the case. Thank you.
Thank you.
What?
Our next speaker is Ashley Owings, followed by Ty Tran, Gillian Adams, and Alexa Young. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Ashley?
Good evening. Hi, my name is Ashley Owings. I am a fourth-grade teacher at Up Academy Dorchester, and tonight I will be speaking on behalf of all non-traditional school teachers and staff who will not be receiving their Schedule A back pay in this upcoming paycheck. Firstly, I would like to express my gratitude to the entire committee for their advocacy and support when it comes to retro pay for BPS employees, but a special thank you to Chair Robinson for taking the time to come speak to union members at our meeting last Wednesday. Your effort does not go unnoticed, and I appreciate you. One week ago, President Joe Biden posted on his Instagram feed, "Let's give public school teachers a raise", a radical concept, though one of the few ideas in this country that most folks can agree on. Teachers do deserve to be paid more. And knowing that the majority of our nation feels this way, it makes me wonder what the reaction from the country would be if they knew that Boston public school teachers were not only not being paid what they deserve, but also not being paid what they are owed, have earned, and were promised by BPS. While the small amount of retro pay we are receiving on Friday is a step in the right direction, teachers at non-traditional schools such as mine, Up Academy Dorchester, will not be receiving the Schedule A pay we are contractually obligated to. We have gone eighteen months without receiving money that we have already worked for, and it is unacceptable and quite frankly egregious. For many months, BPS has acted as if they didn't know Horace Mann charters and other non-traditional schools were even supposed to receive. were even supposed to receive Schedule A back pay. We have consistently gotten the runaround. Just recently, some of our union members have received confirmation from BPS that they know we are owed this money and that they expect it to come, and I quote, "in the coming time." My question is this. What does that mean? We have already waited 18 months. We have already waited through 38 paychecks and counting. We aren't even asking for a raise. We're simply asking for money we have already worked hard to earn, and we're asking for our Schedule A retro pay now. Teachers in my building need this money desperately. Teachers have families to feed, mortgages to pay, inflation to account for. This is money that we have already earned. Why has it not been given to us? We want answers, the question being, when specifically can teachers and staff at non-traditional schools expect to receive the Schedule A back pay BPS has promised us? Thank you.
Thank you. Ty, Gillian, and Alexa are not signed into the meeting. So Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is extremely important to us. Our first and only action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $163,801. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Are there any? Dr. Alkins?
Yes, particularly just about how we're receiving updates on sort of the progress in the milestones that are reached. I think, for example, the one grant that I think is, what's it, the TAG grant, where they're looking at improvement in MAP scores as a measure for improvement. You know, are we, as a school committee, are we indicating or stipulating a progress report that we're going to be receiving at some point so that we know you know, are we in fact seeing an improvement in literacy scores, or are we not? And so that just sort of helps us as we're thinking about continuous improvement or what changes need to be made within it. So I think my question is more along the lines of how are we receiving updates on, you know, following this? You know?
Through your chair. So I think, Dr. Alkins, I think, so depending, like, I think part of this is working out with the committee how they would like to see this. So, and then setting the cadence for it, because each one is going to be different in terms of what's being measured, what's required, and how often the data is actually collected in the grant itself. So I think, you know, we can, we will take, we'll take that offline and we'll, as we present the grants, what probably makes sense is to provide as part of the template that we give to you when, when and under what circumstance we would report that out. So for instance, on the targeted assistance of the TAG grant, I'm sure Director Saban would be able to very easily, you know, let you know we're going to be using MAP. This is how often we're going to be measuring it, and we'll report it out in the spring when we give the committee the full report. Some of these might not be as clear though, because they might have an annual target, or it might only be at the end of the grant. So I think it may be something that we have to actually add into the information that we give you kind of grant by grant.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you. If there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Credit Hernandez? Ms. Lo Para?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia? Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our main report this evening is an equitable grading policy update. Before I turn it over to our presenters, Elementary School Superintendent Christine Landry and Secondary School Superintendent Jean Roundtree, I want to invite Superintendent Skipper to give introductory remarks. I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. So, you know, as I said at the beginning of my report in the remarks, you know, around this particular policy, the intent today is to give an update. I do want to acknowledge the hard work over multiple years now toward this. And, you know, we're titling this student-centered and equitable grading policy because it really is tackling kind of two things. One, certainly trying to look at grading through the lens of students, what students experience, and what added value grading has for a student in the process of learning. And then secondly, on the equitable piece, which I know the team will go into, we see disparate outcome, particularly for our Black and Brown students, with what we see as kind of confusion of academic behavior versus actual academic mastery. And I think the attempt here is to really try to get at to the grading system, what students know, and to use that as the basis as opposed to how students behave in their work, such as passing work in, a completion of work, things that often get confused and are judged as behavior, but are attached to the grade. So I think what we're looking and hoping for from the committee is feedback for us so that before we actually present this as the full policy to you, anything that we want for us to make clearer, that you think would be important to make clearer for the public, for parents, through those eyes to share that with us through your questions and comments so that we can take that back. This is actually, to me, the richness of a school committee discussion as we kind of see this presentation. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Roundtree and to Dr. Landry.
Superintendent, I just wanted to introduce our speakers, if that's okay, Chair? Okay, all right. Good evening, Chair Robinson and Vice Chair O'Neill and members of the school committee. We are happy to be here tonight to provide an update on the development of an equitable grading policy for the district. As the superintendent said, this work has been well underway before my time at the BPS, but it is incredibly important for our students, and I'm excited for the team to share the latest updates with you before bringing forward a final policy for your consideration this spring. The goal of this policy is to bring consistency across the district, ensure our students have every opportunity to demonstrate mastery of content and grade level standards and beyond, to be prepared for their futures. Also central to this policy is for all students to receive consistent feedback on their progress and ensure students see grades as motivational and not punitive. A key update in this presentation this evening is sharing what this policy looks like through the experiences of our student, as the superintendent always asks us to do. For the past two years, my colleagues Jean Roundtree and Dr. Christine Landry have been leading this work. Since this work has begun, Jean and Christine have moved into new roles as school superintendents, doing that job on top of this work too. It has been great to have their perspective as people who are supervising our schools. They see the impacts of our current system every day, and their in-depth knowledge will serve us well when we are able to implement this important work. As we move forward, Christine and Jean will still play a critical role in getting this to the finish line, but I want to introduce to the committee Dr. Leslie Miller, who is our new Chief of Teaching and Learning. Dr. Miller brings an incredible wealth of knowledge into this role, and will work with Jean and Christine on the final policy. I can't thank Jean and Christine enough for all their work. They are both such great examples of public servants who show up for our students in big and small ways every single day. Thank you both. I will now turn it over to Mr. Roundtree to walk us through tonight's presentation to begin with.
Thank you, Dr. Chen. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jean Roundtree, and I'm excited to share our update with you tonight. Before getting into our policy, we wanted to share some of the background around grading. Nationally, the purpose of grades and the practices associated with grading have varied. In some cases, grades are a strict reflection of performance on exams. In other cases, the grades represent a student's growth from the start of the year to the end of the year. In other cases, the grades represent mastery of an academic concept as demonstrated through a variety of assessments or assignments. Some of these more traditional approaches that I've mentioned are based on grading practices developed a century ago for a different purpose than we currently have for issuing grades. We see some of the same inconsistent messaging regarding grades in Boston Public Schools. Like many districts, data indicates that grading practices are variable, both within schools and across schools. This can have a negative impact on students. Variability of grading practices can create room for individual and institutional biases that disproportionately impact historically disadvantaged students. For the past two years, the district has taken the work to, has taken up the work to update our grading policy to ensure equity and consistency across the district. Since it was last presented to the school committee back in 2021, we've done further engagement and refinement of the policy. By developing this policy, we have an opportunity to examine practices that we have in place that can make it more difficult for students to truly reflect their mastery, despite the valuable efforts made by both students and teachers. When grades reflect student behaviors and habits, such as participation, homework, and extra credit completion, grades often conflate academic and non-academic behaviors with student understanding of content, thus creating inequity in grading. While productive habits are important and should continually be addressed and supported, grades must represent student mastery of content and standards. To accomplish this, we want our grading practices to be mathematically accurate, motivational, and resistant to institutional and personal bias. I'll now turn things over to Dr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. And for the introduction, Superintendent and Dr. Chen, my name is Christine Landry, and I'm proud to serve as a school superintendent for Region Four. And members of the school committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We want our grading policy to clearly communicate Boston Public Schools' vision for the meaning and purpose of grades and for what systems and practices need to be in place to reflect that vision. We believe that implementing equitable grading practices will help address inconsistent grading in the district and provide educators, students, and families with guidance that they deserve. We want our schools to capture what our students know and to make it clear that grading is about giving fair and quality feedback to students and their families so that they all know where they stand academically and what their next steps need to be. Our students would benefit from greater consistency in how they are graded and how often they receive feedback on their progress. These equitable grading practices that we will discuss tonight are grounded in mathematical accuracy, content mastery, consistent feedback, bias mitigation, and motivation for students.
I'm very excited to be able to tell everyone about our community engagement process over the last two years. We have had the opportunity to spend considerable amount of time over the last two years soliciting feedback on current practices, reviewing and discussing best practices, and revising our draft proposal based on what we've learned and heard. And I'll give you some details about who we've spoken to. So we've met 60 school leaders over the course of two years, which included the School Leader Grading Working Group that we did in the winter of 2020 into the spring of 2021, the Grading Policy Task Force, which we convened in spring of 2021, the Grading Policy Professional Learning Community, which included a diverse group of stakeholders, which we convened in fall of 2021. And we've had several school leader listening sessions, both in the spring and fall of 2022, to gather feedback from school leaders about our policy. Our Grading Policy Task Force consisted of 30 members, 12 of whom were either teachers or guidance counselors, nine who were school leaders, eight who were central office staff, and we had one parent who also participated. We held a community equity roundtable on May 13th, 2022 that was attended by 158 community members. We held a parent forum on grading on June 4th, 2022 that was attended by 124 parents. We had a meeting on December 1st that was attended by eight community organizations as part of the Community Engagement Advisory Council process. And the meeting included representatives from the Friends of Children Boston, SPEDPAC, Quest, which is Quality Education for Every Student, the Madison Park Alumni Association, the Citywide Parent Council, the Black Ministerial Association, and 10 Point Coalition, the Boston Education Collaborative, and the Possible Zone. We are very grateful for the opportunity we've had to engage with the community over the last two years. And we've learned a lot about what our community values most when it comes to the education of our students and how grades reflect student learning. We know that we must continue to collaborate with the community as we adjust grading practice in our schools. We will continue with community engagement between now and when we present the final policy and throughout our implementation as we develop the accompanying superintendent circulars. Implementation will require school-based staff to learn new practices through professional development and collaborative work. Our students and families will also have to learn new ways of engaging in the learning and feedback process in their classrooms. Continuing this engagement is critical to a successful implementation of the policy. And in the next few slides, we'll now walk you through what this will look like for some of our students. So we created some student portraits to provide examples of how traditional grading practices impact students and what the policy we're proposing will accomplish. So in this example, we have two students, both who have achieved similar levels of academic mastery of the content in their math class as measured by state and classroom assessments. Now, although these students have similar mastery in this example, they do have different academic behaviors when it comes to turning in assignments and also non-academic behaviors that are observable in the classroom. In this case, we have two students who have very similar mastery that ended up with different grades because academic and non-academic behavior was factored in as a significant portion of the grade assigned. In classrooms that use the 0 to 100 scale and reduce grades for late work, or use zeros to reflect missing assignments, or use participation grades that reflect student behavior, students often end up with lower grades despite having similar levels of mastery. So we believe that grades should reflect performance on summative tasks that demonstrate student mastery. You know, we believe that the use of zeros in the 0 to 100 scale has a punitive impact on student grades because it disproportionately penalizes students for lower performance. We also believe that behavior should not be the basis for assigning grades and that students should receive feedback regarding behavior. However, that feedback should be shared separate from the grade, and intervention should be separate from the grade.
You have the next slide, please. So in this second example, we have two students that have achieved average mastery but have very different academic and non-academic behaviors that are factored into their grades. but have very different academic and non-academic behaviors that are factored into their grades. In this instance, one student achieved an average level of mastery of content despite inconsistent attendance and work completion and would be issued an F under traditional grading. The grading system in this instance placed heavy emphasis on participation, which benefited the second student, but led to a grade that was higher than the student's actual proficiency in the content. This can also be detrimental to students when future decisions are made based on inflated grades that do not reflect the student's mastery. Next slide. We owe it to our students and their families to give them high quality and meaningful feedback about what students know and are able to do. For students, the best gauge their progress and understand the decisions made regarding grades that they are issued. It is critical that we prioritize feedback and mastery in grading practices across the district in a few ways. First is by emphasizing and weighing summative tasks that demonstrate mastery more heavily. And by summative tasks, we're referring to end-of-unit tests, research projects, and similar longer-term tasks. Secondly, by providing all students with consistent feedback on assignments before they are formally assessed to make sure that we clarify any misconceptions they have and highlight areas of their growth. Third, through implementing school-based practices to audit grades after each term to ensure that all students receive grades and support systems are responsive to student progress. And finally, through addressing behavioral concerns through the correct channels and at the root level. So for example, attendance concerns should be addressed through the policies outlined in the BPS attendance policy. Next slide. So currently, our data indicates that most of our students who are on the verge of earning a passing grade are students from groups that have been historically marginalized. This policy focused on mastery will help us shift our practices to provide better targeted support to our students and give them the tools necessary to achieve proficiency across all content areas. This graph helps to illustrate the point. The data on the left represents all students who had a failing grade in eighth grade ELA. With eighty-five percent of those students who received a failing mark, uh, who are approaching a passing grade with an average of forty to fifty-nine percent. So the eighty-five percent in blue of those students who failed actually had an average of forty to fifty-nine percent. When this number is broken down by student demographics, we see that ninety-two percent of current multilingual learners with disabilities and ninety-seven percent of current multilingual learners without disabilities received a failing mark, have an average that is approaching a passing grade. So for our white and Asian students, this number was too small to be able to provide a percentage. Next slide, please.
The last portrait that we want to share with you, um, I think speaks to the importance of motivation and persistence and how uh, how grading can impact motivation and persistence. This portrait describes a student who has failed the first two marking terms by a significant margin. Now, there are a number of reasons that a student might not get off to the right start in a class. Uh, some of our students have to balance jobs and school. Uh, some of our students have faced personal illnesses or a change in the health of a family member. Uh, and students can find themselves far behind academically. And at times, student performance in the first two terms can put students in a situation where they are mathically, mathematically eliminated from achieving a passing grade over four terms using the traditional zero to one hundred grading scale. Now, in my six years as a school leader, um, these were often some of the most difficult and discouraging conversations, uh, because obviously our goal is to always, uh, engage students, um, and continue to tell them about all the things that are possible through learning. But sometimes students who wanted a second chance to engage often lost motivation and made rational decisions about whether or not to continue working in the class because of how far they were from passing. Traditional grading practices like the zero to one hundred scale can make it incredibly, incredibly difficult for students to recover, which then takes our, away our opportunity to engage them in learning. Next slide. So the challenges that we've identified in the student portraits reflect challenges our students face. Our current grading practices can be variable, can conflate academic behaviors with mastery and academic performance, and they can unintentionally discourage students and fail to mitigate bias. In addition, many of our current practices do not consistently reflect alignment with our district opportunity gap policy, specifically Goal Five, which states dismantling structural barriers and providing greater access to opportunities to create a district that prioritizes its capacity to give each child equitable access to opportunity and achievement while vigilantly identifying and dismantling cultural, structural, racial, and social barriers that could hinder their access to high-quality learning environments. And next slide. So to ensure that this is possible, we must align grading policies with the objectives of the opportunity and achievement gap policy where every child in every classroom, in every school, has the same opportunity to achieve the greatness within them as anybody else. Our grading policies must provide useful information to families, students, and teachers to determine what interventions are necessary and what classes students are prepared to take. Our policies must ensure grades consistently reflect student mastery to help students gauge their progress aligned to academic standards. And our policies must ensure grading scales are balanced and equitable across the district. The following four slides that Dr. Landry will present, uh, will outline the specific practices that will make up the policy.
Thanks, Jean. So as you've heard, the policy or the draft policy places emphasis on regular feedback for students and families to support their growth. The policy also prioritizes consistency with how students receive formative feedback in elementary grades and ensures that all students receive term grades for each class. For secondary students, the expectation will be that students receive regular feedback on their progress, including weekly assignment feedback that is visible through the student information system. Next slide. Students who have not completed assigned work can be issued an incomplete grade for their term to enable equitable learning recovery. Students will then have two weeks to resolve the incomplete grade, or the failing grade will be issued. It is important that students follow due dates for assignments. Our vision is that grades reflect student mastery of content, so students who submit late assignments will not be penalized by lowering their grade. Instead, students can be referred for additional academic support or intervention to improve the timeliness of their work submission. Next slide. In this draft policy, we'll also expect that schools will use grading scales that are mathematically accurate and consistent. Best practices include the use of numerical grading scales such as zero through four or fifty to a hundred that do not disproportionately penalize students for low performance. Grades should consist of both formative assignments for students to practice new skills and summative assignments that measure student mastery. Students should also have opportunities to retake assessments where appropriate so that grades reflect students' most current level of mastery. Students should receive clear and actionable feedback on assignments before summative assessments to make sure that students know what is expected of them to meet mastery. Next slide. And although other more detailed course-specific points will need to be delineated through superintendent circulars, the issue of grading STEM and humanities courses came up enough in our discussions over the past two years that we wanted to enshrine this guidance in the policy itself. So students may only receive a composite grade for humanities or STEM or equivalent um, courses if the course is offered at the equivalent of a double block. The reason for this is to ensure that students get substantive opportunities to learn the content of both disciplines being taught um, in, within the course. Next slide, and I'll turn it back to Mr. Roundtree, uh, for our final slide.
So we wanted to end where we started, um, with our vision. And our vision is that every child must have the same unfettered access to every conceivable tool to unlock the greatness within them. To ensure this is possible, we must change some of our grading practices so our students have a deep understanding of content, receive consistent feedback on their progress, and so they see grades as motivational, motivational and not punitive. We thank you for your time tonight. We look forward to bringing the final proposal to you later this spring, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you all for the report and thank you to the entire team for your tireless work to get us to this point. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. It's LePierre.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, team, for this work. Um, I just appreciate the, the amount of time um, and thoroughness that you've really brought to, to this topic. Um, I have, uh, one question. Uh, given that you were able to engage with so many different folks, uh, at various levels, um, that are impacted in different ways by this, by the inconsistency across the district. What do you, based on those conversations, what are you learning would be some of the larger obstacles to overcome? Um, in actually fully implementing this for, for everyone across the district?
I'm gonna have, uh, Christine and Jean respond because they had a lot of direct contact with the various stakeholders. I would also say that this grading, this proposed draft policy also aligns with a lot of the work that we're doing around our instructional focus on equitable literacy and grade level work. So you'll see that there are some changes that were hap, we're taking on now in doubling down on grade level texts and tasks that also prepare for this consistency around mastery. But I'll, I'll have, um, Jean and Christine give some more specific examples of what we've learned.
Um, so I guess I'll begin, um, we, we did meet with a lot of, uh, a lot of distinct groups and I, I think it's really important that we maybe start with the feedback that we got from students. Um, it was really interesting, uh, we met with BSAC, uh, on three different occasions. Um, and it was really interesting to get the students' perspectives, um, on their experience with grading. Um, you know, students, um, talked a little bit about, you know, the, the length of their day and the number of periods they have um, and how, you know, at times that, you know, the, the different expectations, you know, that different teachers have, you know, um, you know, at times has specific impacts. You know, they talked about teachers who have grading practices that really, really work for them. Um, and were able to kind of give us some insight into, um, what, what are the ways that the, the grading practices and you know, policies around, you know, submission of work, actually, you, they feel benefit them. And they've also were able to share, you know, examples of things that didn't work, uh, work for them. Um, students that we spoke to were certainly not, um, in favor of the zero to one hundred scale. Uh, and they talked about, um, how if they did get a zero for one reason or another, that like how hard it was for them to get their average back up to where they felt like it should be. Um, and, and that was something that came through very, very clearly, right? And also, you know, students indicated that they felt it wasn't always fair if they turned in something late that was really good. Um, but it, because it was late, the grade didn't reflect how good their work was.
Yeah, I think that's a, a great point. And just, um, speaking also to the feedback that we received from, from teachers and school leaders also. Um, you know, as, as much as, uh, teachers are, are generally very excited about many of these practices um, coming into play, they also are, are ready to admit that grading is a very personal thing for teachers. It's not something that you're taught, um, typically in an education program. And so you're kind of on your own and it becomes a very personal thing, right? And in some ways, um, you know, I was grateful to many of our educators who admitted to, um, uh, you know, sometimes using grades punitively because it was something that they had to use and they want to make that change, but it is a mind shift, um, and it, it's a considerable one. And I think what Dr. Chen said about providing support and guidance through curriculum materials, helping people transfer and, or think differently about what types of assignments should carry more weight and how they can be graded using rubrics is something that we as a system have to provide more support around. And we've started to do that through the equitable literacy work, um, as she mentioned. Um, but it's going to be, continue to be a, um, you know, something that we have to engage in together, right? It's not teacher's fault that, um, they're using grading the way they have. It's, it's, you know, you grade the way that you were graded often. Um, and there has been little guidance along the way to do it. So we have to provide that guidance and support centrally um, to help our educators, um, institute this policy.
Appreciate that. Um, I do have one more question, you know, as, as with everything, I think, in BPS. Um, I think that we know that there are bright spots or like for this particular piece, we know that there are schools that already, um, have this in practice. And so I see this more as the creating a standard across the district, right? Working towards, um, that standardization. And so do you have a sense of number of schools or percentages across the district that are already really implementing many of this? I, I think what is important for me to, one, better understand, but also for the public to hear is that this isn't a really a potential complete overhaul, like these pieces, these practices already do exist in some of our schools, but I, I'd love to know what those numbers really look like.
Yeah, I, I can start there. Um, you know, as Jean talked through, um, what our um, engagement looked like, he'd mentioned how sixty-two school leaders had been involved. And that involvement was not sort of a one-time meeting. Those were people who were involved in a deep level in ongoing work and practice, um, with us in some capacity. And the majority of those schools were either in a very small way, you know, maybe through one grade band or even in one classroom trying things out. Um, but I know Jean can speak more to, um, the, uh, secondary world where this really started and it was really, it was Jean and, and other, um, heads of school who were doing this work, um, several years ago, who came to the central office, engaged with me when I was in academics, um, to, to figure out how we could grow the work and support each other in it. So Jean, if you want to talk a little bit about what that work looked like and, and how many of our heads of school are involved?
Yeah, thank you, Christine. Um, so I can speak at the secondary level, um, that we've engaged, um, you know, with leaders on several different times. And I think, you know, I can probably, uh, you say that, you know, we've got eight to ten schools uh, at the secondary level that have engaged in, um, learning about equitable grading or, or, um, implementing equitable grading in some way in terms of either piloting in specific classrooms or, um, u- using, you know, part of the, um, some of the practices, but maybe not all of them. Um, and, you know, I was really grateful for the opportunity I had as a school leader, learned to learn from my peers, you know, who had been doing some of these things for, for multiple years already, right? Uh, I won't, I won't put any of the leaders on the spot by, by mentioning their schools. Um, but we've also gotten a chance to talk, you know, with the teams who have, who have gone through implementation and kind of learned, you know, what is, you know, what has their journey been? What are the things that worked right away? What adjustments did they make? And what are some things that they had to kind of, you know, you know, rethink? Um, and to build on what Christine said, you know, the beliefs about grading, you know, are are deeply engraved ingrained. I think also for a lot of educators. Um, you know, we did well in school and so the things, the ways that we were graded worked for us. And so, you know, we applied them as teachers, right? And I think that. Um, you know, part of it is is kind of creating space for people to learn and to. Um, you know, you know, try things out, right? And and measure the impact. And that's what we hope to support more schools and do.
I would say this is about upholding high academic standards. In a universal way, wh- and what's really important are some of the things that Jean and Christine talked about. Where schools at the local level make sense of this within. Their context, but yet there's still consistency so that a parent who has children at different schools. Is not navigating different ways and approaches. And determinations for grading, but it really is based on academic mastery. And consistently across. And I think the other piece is the feedback is for every every student deserves. At least the the similar levels of of feedback at like a baseline level. And not so much variation. And so that way, if families are really clear on the expectations. That creates less variability and and greater um feedback.
Yeah, just a a lot of appreciation for the work. Um, as a parent who sees. Write the report card or sees the um, the assignments. I really appreciate it when I'm in in my in the school where my kids are at. They do separate out the academic pieces versus what they're calling um leadership or really it's like executive functioning, right? Um, and and I I think it's really helpful to be able to have those conversations. With my kids and that wasn't, that wasn't how I was graded, but it's been really helpful. As a parent for me to be able to get a a real understanding. Of my my kids mastery, whether it's in the academic pieces. Or in their organizational, their leadership components. So just a lot of appreciation for this work and. And how to make it a more universal practice. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Dr. Alkins and then to Mr. Maida.
Uh, thank you uh for this presentation. Um, I am certainly. In favor of grading equity. Um, you know, the the work of uh Joe Feldman. Um, and really thinking about, at the very least, I think we'll have a better sense of. The accuracy and particularly like correlation with our assessments and just sort of seeing where those achievement. Or opportunity gaps sort of lie. So I think. It's a better, it's a better sense of where we are there. Um, I agree that it it hits on like. The bias resistance aspects by removing those barriers. So I'm very appreciative of that. I think where. And and granted, like these past three years, because of the pandemic, has really soured the ability to. To gather data more or less on the the last pillar, which is like the intrinsic motivation part and what it does in students. Um, and I think. What also educators are also afraid of. Is losing all of the other, if you want to call them soft skills that go into. Um, I won't say, and and I agree, it shouldn't be included in academic performance, but. What makes somebody successful in a career path? So if we talk about even something simple as deadlines. Meeting deadlines and knowing that there's a sense of accountability there. Still needs to be a a vital part of our education system. And so I, yeah, I agree. I don't think it should shake out in our grading policy. But I think teachers and educators are probably thinking about, well, where do we hold students accountable then? How do we continue to do that? And that's what the intrinsic motivation part hopefully takes care of. But we don't know, and and I'm, I'm I'm really looking forward to the next few years of being able just to see the data shake out. Um, along uh along so we can really figure that. Um, oh, in in that sense, I mean. What are you all thinking for? Um. So what are you all thinking in terms of the professional development, the massive professional development challenge that this is going to uh take? Uh, yeah, that that's just a start. Where are you all thinking um about that?
So Dr. Alkins, thank you so much for your comments. I think that um. This is something I am so glad that uh Leslie Ryan Miller has joined us. She as. Coming in has deeply been thinking right away about. What's the training and what's the implementation that this will take? And I would love for her to share a few top lines around that because it is about. I do think building upon the work on equitable literacy and really. Universally and consistently understanding what grade level is and what mastery is, that's really critically important. But there's also aspects of feedback. And how to give that feedback in ways that are productive. That support students and that are precise um and descriptive. So I'll I'll ask Dr. Miller to share some of her insight here.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity and it's good to meet everyone. Look forward to meeting folks in person at some point. Um, you know, we've really, the the implementation is really where um it's at. And. So we've been thinking critically about what that looks like. Um, we want to do this right. Um, and so we're really thinking about taking this slow. And so thinking about implementation over a three-year period. Um, with steps along the way. So the first step is really reviewing. Um, the circulars that we already have in place around mass core grading policies. Um, and taking a thorough look at those. And then I would imagine that in the first year. We start some professional development opportunities to get our educators familiar with what. This new policy might entail um and the professional development needed for implementation. Um, along with that, I think one really critical piece to the work. Is holding information sessions for both students and families to let them know what this change. Um, will mean over time. And so I see those things happening in that first year. Um, also in that first year would be the development of new circulars. That really um provide clear guidelines for educators around. Uh, again, what the shifts in the grading policy will mean. Um, and I'd like to do that um with a lot of feedback. Um, from our educators, um, because they're the ones who will be implementing this. So. Um, as uh Mr. Roundtree said at the start of the presentation, um, that's going to be critical. Um, and I I. Have been really impressed at the amount of community engagement that's happened in the last two years. And so. Um, I want to con- continue that momentum and make sure that there's a lot of community involvement going forward. Um, and then again, in years two and three, after we hear from educators about the the professional development that they need. Making sure that they get that. Um, and and looking to a lot of the national leaders. Um, the local leaders um to support that work. So. Um, again, it's going to be a slow roll, um, but I think we will be very measured in this. Um, and along the way, collecting feedback is just really going to be integral to this process to see where our strengths are and our areas for growth.
Yeah, and I just have one thing to um what Dr. Miller said. Um. I think also we can really tap into, you know, the knowledge and experience of our partners. Uh, I know that there are um there are teams within um within our schools that have been working through the telescope network. Um, on um developing and piloting um equitable grading practices. We met with. Um, one school over the last two weeks um to kind of hear about about their journey. And so there's a lot of teacher leadership um already in the district. Uh, that we would plan to tap into. Um, and as. Dr. Chen said, I mean, this aligns with our work around equitable grading, right? It aligns with our work around inclusion. Um, and we see these things um really working in concert to provide um better opportunities to develop student mastery.
Mr. Meta, I mean, excuse me, Dr. Alkins, are you okay?
No, we can come back around. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Maida.
All right, um. I don't have that many questions. I'm just gonna say, um. I kind of have an idea of what this looks like in action, cause I go to. Anyway, cause I go to one of those schools that you mentioned, but um. I'm just gonna say, I'm in support of these things.
Support. Okay, thank you.
And if I can, I think that you were involved in at least one or two of the sessions that we did with BSAC. So just thank you for your feedback and. And all of um your your friends and colleagues' feedback.
Great, thank you. Mr. Tran and then Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and uh thank you uh. To and thanks all the uh member of of the uh. Task force that brought this uh. Rating uh equity policy forward. Um. I'd be uh. Pretty frank when I make this statement. Um. I echo. A member, Lopera, Lorena Lopera regarding. The uh subjective uh. Um. Uh, the subjective, the sub- subjectivity in making. In 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 grading uh and in uh dispensing what are the criteria for grading from. Teachers varies from teacher to teacher. I'm not saying that 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 they don't understand the uh. Criteria for equity, and we all know each each one of us. Has a different. Take on what equity is. The policy sounds good. The policy sounds, you know, the 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 implementation with a three-year. Um, training that are you 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 are aiming for. Uh, a grade. The concern is. Is it going to work? I doubt it. I really doubt it. It has always been. The individual teachers' practice. Regardless of how they understand. Uh, the uh the the differences between ranging from family to family, from students to students. From um. You know, di- different socioeconomic status to different socioeconomic economic status. That has always been the case. Maybe since time beginning, especially in education. I've been a teacher for five years and maybe, you know, forty years ago, but but I've seen that in practice so so uh until now. Not only in high school, not only in 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 um in elementary school, but in college as well. Um. So I wish you luck. But um, I I applaud the work, but I wish you luck. The only recommendation that I would make, I hope it 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 is something that would be considered. Is to hold teachers accountability. In 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 ensuring that equity is in fact. Whether they range from one teacher to another, there are criteria. That they should adhere to. Let me give you an example. Well, I I give you an example, my own ex- uh ex- example, when I was in college. I don't speak English as I do now, uh, because I'm a. I was on originally trained as a science uh person, not as an a. Not as 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 a lawyer and my English was not that great. Took me, well, now what, forty-five years? And it's still not great, but um. When I was in college, I don't participate in classroom, even though I I aced all my 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 science test. But uh, the fact that I don't participate. Maybe because I'm uh back then, I'm more of an introvert person. Or maybe because I'm uh I I'm afraid that I, when I speak up. My English may not be up to the power, you know, up to the the. The level that 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 the teacher understand or the class may laugh at me, you know what I mean? So some of the grades that did not reflect, you know, instead of acing acing it, they give me a B or whatever. And when I sit down with the teacher, they he he explained, he or she explained to me why I got a B be- be- because I didn't participate in class. And I just keep my mouth shut. So what I'm saying is, what? If I'm a student, if if a parent uh who has issues with that, should they bring it to uh to to the superintendent? Or to to the headmaster? What are the possible? Mandates to ensure teachers are adhering to. A set of uniform equity. That's that's my concern. Thank you.
Mr. Tran, first and foremost, thank you for sharing your own lived experiences around. How grading has impacted you as a learner previously. And I think what you've shared is. Um, example of what some of our students go through and what what the this this proposed policy. You know, while in draft is looking to serve. And I think there are a couple of things. Um, and I also appreciate you um pushing us on the hard. Aspects of like, how will this be successful? Like, what will happen? It's important, but how will it happen? Because it it has so many layers of complexity. And I think a couple of things I would offer and 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 invite the team to to share as well. One, I think this is the reason why um Christine and Jean have have spent so much effort. In the last couple of years engaging stakeholders to really understand. And you heard that there were teachers and and students and principals. And just having two school superintendents lead this work. Well, I know it's been extra work for them. Uh, they supervise the schools. Um, and principals are involved in these discussions. I think paired with, um, so there there's, you have the people who hold. Educators responsible here, leading this work with full understanding. And I would say that their colleagues also really embrace and understand this policy. Um, I think also there's some very thoughtful three-year implementation that Dr. Miller mentioned as well, where. These issues are very complex and to get just right. And so we want to make sure we spend largely the first year. Ensuring that um there's a way for teachers to fully understand. I I think all of us believe that accountability is needed. But we have the responsibility to provide the support for teachers to be able to be successful at this. Um, I think in terms of a technical detail, um, we mentioned that we're looking for regular feedback. So that parents and students have the same expectations. Part of this will be feedback. Um, that will be uploaded in the system. So there's a way that we can see if. The frequency of the feedback is given, again, not as sort of this big brother, if you will, but more of. Being able to provide supports for teachers. In how to best um help them provide that meaningful feedback on a regular basis. Um, so I think those are some of the things um that we're thinking about, but I do appreciate your comment and your push for us to to work harder. At really fully engaging a a plan that will um in fact work.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and um. Thank you for the team that has been working on this. As my fellow members have said, I also applaud. The amount of the the thoughtful approach to gaining feedback from a variety of sources. Teachers, school leaders, parents, students, the meetings BSAC were interested to learn about. Um, um. I liked how Dr. Alkins talked about research and data because I do think, you you know, that was a question I had about what's the research backing this approach? And um, that has been addressed and it will be interesting to see the data out of this. I I want to push a little bit more, I think, where Dr. Alkins was going as well of saying, I also agree with taking now. The subjectivity and that. Aware of the impact that subjectivity can have. Uh, particularly from a uh inheritor implicit bias viewpoint. And so appreciate that work and and the fact that the team tied it to our opportunity achievement gap policy very specifically. And I appreciate that. But I am interested in, and I'm not sure who could address this, probably Mr. Roundtree. And I appreciate that. But I am interested in, and I'm not sure who could address this, probably Mr. Roundtree, is you've often heard me in the past, when we talk about policies, where I focus in on unintended consequences. And I am a little bit concerned about the unintended consequences of, you know, attendance not, not being a strong a part of it, handing in homework not being a strong a part of it, you know, it is, those are important lessons for our students as well and are an important part of the puzzle of being ready to move forward, right? Our, our ultimate job, because we are the body that sets the policy, is to have our students to move forward in their career, college, life, et cetera. You move to college, you gotta show up for class, right? And no one is sitting there taking attendance. You don't show up, you're not gonna, you're not gonna succeed. So Mr. Roundtree, talk to me for a little bit, please, about how you explore the issue of unintended consequences. If we change, you know, how students ultimately receive feedback.
Well, thank you, Mr. O'Neill, for that question. So I think that, I think that's a very important question. That's one of the things that we've spoken to and one of the areas where we've gotten a lot of feedback from school leaders, because there, as I said, there are school leaders who have been doing a lot of this, a lot of this work for years. And a lot of the feedback about unintended consequences is about, you know, we have socialized our students in a lot of ways to, to do work and submit work, you know, you know, so that they don't lose points, right? And so that, so that they don't get zeros, right? And so I think that what we're trying to do is to reframe the why of, of the work that we do is, you know, you do work to drive your learning and you get feedback to further drive your learning. And so one of the things that, and one of the reasons that we have a three-year implementation plan is because we think that there are some things that, you know, are adjustments that can be made, I think, in the, in the shorter term. And there are some things that before we, you know, we feel like they should be implemented, we know that people will need time to kind of, you know, reframe, reframe their understanding, right? Like, for instance, you know, you, you mentioned homework. I, I think that one thing that, you know, a lot of people feel uncommon is that homework is a really effective way to practice skills that are learned in class. We, we think that obviously, you know, homework should count, but I also think, you know, if we have students who are failing their classes because they're not doing their homework, that we, we may not be having it at the, at the exact weight that would be most effective to drive learning, right? And so I think also, you know, in, in addition to, you know, really thinking about like the, the why of turning work in on time, I, I think that a lot of times if a student doesn't submit an assignment and they just put into a zero, goes in the gradebook, that's a missed opportunity for learning, right? A lot of times people will just kind of move on. What we would encourage schools to do is to, if a student hasn't submitted an assignment, you can, you can, you can write the word missing or write the word M in the SIS system, so that's a communication that, you know, that we have not collected information about that assignment, right? So that we're encouraging students to complete all the assignments that they're, that they're given, rather than getting a zero and then moving to the next assignment. I think, you know, also in terms of, you know, unintended consequences, you know, for, you know, classrooms that utilize participation grades, I think, I think in any system, students kind of learn the hidden curriculum of the classroom and how they can get ahead, and if students are, are getting ahead, you know, by demonstrating their, you know, how well they can do compliance behaviors, right? I think that things will shift if the compliance behaviors are not what, what makes it into the grade and it's about the mastery, right? And so some students who may have, you know, who may have, you know, previously benefited from their soft skills really factoring heavily into their grades, their grades will be now more closely associated with mastery, so it will require them, I think, you know, to attend to feedback that they receive to really make sure that their, that their mastery matches and aligns, you know, with their, with compliance behaviors and with self skills.
So, Mr. Roundtree, though, how is mastery demonstrated?
So, you know, we, so mastery is demonstrated in a lot of different ways. And what, what, what we would do is we would encourage, you know, teachers to continue doing, and teachers, particularly teachers in this district, I'm always inspired at the different ways, you know, that they engage students to show their mastery. It can be a test, it can be a quiz, it can be a debate, it can be interpretive dance, right? It could be, it could be a play that you write. We would encourage our, our educators to base the grades this student receive on the distinct opportunities that students have had to display their mastery, and also to give feedback, and if students want to try an assessment again, if they've learned more, if they're better at it, to offer them that opportunity and not average the two grades together, but to replace, you know, with, with the grade that most, that most completely reflects their current level of mastery.
If we have lessening reliance on hide, on hard work, on homework, excuse me, and attendance, and increase on mastery, are we not in effect increasing reliance on high-stakes testing?
So
And I'm just, I'm just, I'm pushing, right? Because there's got to be a, a variety of community of voices on this, so I want to get some of these thoughts out on the table.
Well, we, we, we're certainly emphasizing attendance, right? Because we feel like if a student is not in school, that means they're not learning and they're also not getting feedback. So in no way do we feel like, you know, we are saying that students should be able to attend less, right? Like, we, we will continue to support effective attendance, because students aren't there, they're not gaining mastery, and they're not getting feedback on their work.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I went over my time, so.
That's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree.
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions and then I'll, I'll go back around, because I see all the hands are up. Again, Superintendent, did you have your hand raised?
Uh, no, it's okay, Chair. I was just gonna respond to something that Vice Chair O'Neill asked, but I, I think it's, it's fine.
Okay, so one of the groups we haven't talked a lot about in this that I think will certainly have a lot to say and think about are parents. And I know you talked about, you know, very rigorous, you know, overtime training for teachers. My question is, how are you going to have a similar kind of trainings, et cetera, for parents? Thinking about parents now who can push to get student grades changed or, you know, students giving more time on tests, et cetera, so some inequitable processes there. So that's part of it. The other is, I know we've spoken a lot around high school students. Where does this begin at the elementary level? So that we are shifting student behavior, teacher behavior, and parent behavior regarding grades as we are moving forward. So by the time our elementary kids are in high school, they will have a, a different sense about what it takes to earn the grade.
I can start with the, the second question first, if that's okay, about elementary grades. Thank you for the question. One technical piece in a way that will be part of this implementation is an update to the report card for elementary schools. And the report card that we currently use in the district is outdated. It doesn't reflect current Common Core standards. And the way I like to think about it is that our, our teachers end up doing mental gymnastics to have to translate what they're doing in the classroom to the report card that goes home to families. And I'm sure, you know, for families too, it, it may not, the language of the report card may not necessarily reflect the way that they're hearing about their child's learning in other ways. So it's, it ends up being not as useful a tool as it could be to, for families and for students. So that's one piece of it that we will need to, and that has been part of, a big part of the conversation on the elementary side over the last two years with teachers and school leaders and families too, was what kind of information are you looking for in the report card? So that will, that will have to change as one way to show sort of that more of the summative feedback piece. The other part at the elementary level is, you know, why we, we don't think it's necessarily appropriate to put the same type of weekly expectation for, for marks for younger children. It is incredibly important and equally important, as you said, to have feedback become more of a normalized thing for our elementary kids, right? So that family, our teachers are reaching out to families with some concrete information about student progress. And again, they'll need guidance on how to do that and how that works into the curriculum that we're using. So I think that will be one of the most important pieces at the elementary side to start talking about mastery and talking about what are the next steps for our children to make and what is the homeschool connection to do that, so that it won't be such a shock to make the change to secondary. Their grades typically mean something very different, right? But if we have consistency and, and sort of normalize talking about the report card and talking about ongoing feedback, we can have better systems. And to your first question about working with families, yeah, that's a fabulous question and a really, really important one. And so we've been thinking about with the, with the implementation that it would include work with our engagement team, that it would include modules that we can provide to schools that they can, you know, they can carry out with the support of, of central office with their families about these changes. So that all schools have an opportunity at a family night, back-to-school night, and especially at different inflection points in, in children's school career, right? When they're moving into high school, when they're moving into middle school grades, where some of the emphasis changes, that they would also have opportunities for families to come and hear about those changes, to learn about them and to be a part of that ongoing process.
Thank you.
I would just add to that the superintendent is sort of designed the way we work across the system. And so in partnership with my colleague, Ana Taveras, we'd be able to also work with our, you know, home compacts, the roundtables, different forums, also with parent liaisons and have regional levels. They're just great opportunities in addition to some of the things that Dr. Landry talked about with modules and so on, that schools can do at the local level, but it's just so important to be able to have this conversation so that everyone fully understands, not the, just the intent, but the technical aspects of how this will be implemented and what the impact will be.
Okay, I have other questions, but I'm gonna go back around. So we're back at Mr. Tran, then Dr. Elkins, and Diego, Mr. Maida.
Apologize to Member Elkins. I, 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 thank you. Yeah, anyway, Madam Chair, thank you for, for allowing me my second round ahead of Member Elkins.
I call it like I see it on my screen, so that's it.
That, that's fine. That's, that's great. Unintended consequences, I understand that. I, I agree that, that, that it, it, it is something that should be concerned. But there are other concerns that override, in my mind, override the unintended consequences that should also be considered. My recommendation is that if there is a, an equity criteria to be implemented into schools, it should take into consideration the level, the grades. I suppose the equity applicable to elementary school is going to be different from the equity criteria that is applicable to a senior in high school who are going to be going to college. The reason I'm raising this is, is also from my experience, okay? Unintended consequences. I didn't want to cut my class when I was in, in college, but being a refugee student with nobody around, I, I had to make sure that I walk in, in Chinatown as a dishwasher to put foot in my, on my table while I'm, while, you know, while I'm trying to survive school. So is that going to be something to be considered when a teacher sit me down and say, okay, even though you, you, you aced the test, the final exam, one hundred percent, but I'm gonna give you a B because you didn't attend class? You see what I'm saying? Unintended consequences also need to be somehow divided into or it, it, it need to be given some consideration into the, the individual situation that are intrinsic in each of the students' status. I believe that in high school, there are students, and I know that, in, in, in high school right now, in the Vietnamese communities, there are students who are working, who are, who are working to put foot on the table to help their family. Should the completion of one hundred percent of, of homework, as well as the completion of ninety percent of or ninety-five percent of attendance be some kind of a, you know, deciding factor in the grade that he, he or she is going to get? That potentially would affect their, you know, their, 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 their later on in, 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 you know, their, their, their later application to, to college. So my, my recommendation, well, it, it's not recommendation, but my thought is, is that it should be, you know, it, it, you know, the criteria on, on equity should take into consideration all these, and, 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 and it should be the design in a way that elementary school is, is going to be somehow different from high school. So my, my, my last statement is that the work is right ahead of you guys. It's gonna be very tough. I don't know how you're gonna come up with something that is one hundred percent completely equitable to everybody. That is one thing. The other thing is, how are you going to make sure that the teachers are going to follow with it is another thing. So the uniformity of equity remains something that I will always question. Thank you.
Could I, could I just respond to a, a, a couple of points? So first off, I want to thank you for that, for sharing your story again. I think that we are thinking about the students that are balancing, you know, responsibilities outside of, outside of school, and I think when we talk about, you know, the idea of having an equitable policy, right? You know, having a heavy weight on homework assumes that, that all students have the same, you know, equal opportunity, right? To, to do their homework and they have the same resources outside of class to do homework, and that is certainly something that we're thinking about. In terms of your question about how we support, and how we support, you know, all schools and all teachers in making adjustments, you know, you reminded me of something I learned from, you know, one of my favorite teachers. You know, Richard Elmore, he said, for every increment, additional increment of performance you require, you owe the same increment of support. And it, and as a supervisor of schools, we use the, the ninety-day planning process, right? For schools to identify their, their plans, their desired outcomes, strategic initiatives, you know, goals and benchmarks, the timeline with which they'll do those, and then how they're gonna progress monitor. And we would support, you know, these, this initiative, I think in similar ways to how we do equitable literacy and inclusion, to make sure that we're consistent. The other thing that I'll say is, you know, there's a big research base, you know, that supports the work that we've, we've recommended and and Dr. Elkins mentioned Joe Feldman, but it's also based on the work of Thomas Guskey, Susan Brookhart, Ron Ferguson, Doug Reeves, you know, and many others. And one addition to kind of looking at the systemic level and thinking about, you know, students who have different circumstances is, we also know that a lot of students, you know, transfer from, you know, from different schools at different times. And when they do that, you know, oftentimes they have different expectations at the new place that they go to. And so having consistency, you know, within the school is important, but also across schools, as we support students who, you know, who make transfers and transitions. And the circulars would also give very clear guidance for if a student transfers from one school to another, right? Establishing a date that would say, okay, the grade should be, should be Establishing a date that would say, okay, the grade should be um should be issued by. Either the sending or the receiving school in a way that is consistent and even, right, for all students, which is, I think, uh the the way that we can make sure that all learners across the district are supported.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Um, yes, this um. A lot of things, a lot of things have been said, um. You know. Regarding unintended consequences, I think anything under the sun, really, you can. There could be anything that could happen. You could find people that could game the system, figure out a way like, hey, I don't have to go to class. If I gotta turn something in that shows mastery and I get it, but on the back end, it's in many cases. You know, you're only hurting yourself by 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 doing those things, unfortunately. Um what? You you know, what this policy also helps to do is, I think, again, it cannot be stated enough. It's the mitigation of the systemic bias. That has gone into grading policies and that has sort of advantage, even coming into, if I'm coming into a grade. I'm also coming into it from my previous teacher, who might have been a very different teacher than someone else who's coming into the same classroom. Having different expectations, um you know, different levels of rigor. And so we're already on different footing from the moment we step into a classroom. So having a policy like this. In many respects does even the playing field of like mitigating the bias that can that can go um. That can go against them in in many respects. The other thing that this will require uh to to Mr. Tran's point is. Um which I I think is already being done, um is the multiple forms of assessment. Um and really just how uh we are looking at mastery proficiency a- a- at all levels. And that just has to be the case where it becomes, you know, like you said, the heavy lift is. That's a lot of work on our teachers. It's a lot more work to to create, because what we're talking about is essentially customized educational pathways. That is what we are talking about. I'm actually curious to see if philosophically as a district. Are we moving towards a space of even that there are, we're not talking about grades anymore? Are we talking about just reaching levels of mastery and allowing and we're allowing folks to move at their own pace? That's more of my question. Um and you know, that that. Very vague and nebulous question, but you know, I I'd be curious to get your your thoughts, just because you all have been engaged in this for. The past three years.
And I I can start and um Gina, others please jump in. We do have some schools in the district that are um thinking about and and trying out. Uh competency-based grading uh in in different ways. Um often in our, you know, the superintendent talked about um being on some of our alternative ed schools um today. Um in in some of those spaces in particular, um where, you know, students are are um facing many obstacles to being in school. Right? Um there's different ways that that schools are thinking about grading and some really, really promising work. And I think you're you're absolutely right that, you know, the work we're talking about today is is incredibly difficult work. Uh to really um them, you know, allow students to demonstrate mastery and create those opportunities for them to do so in in authentic ways. And then sort of competency-based grading is is even another level um beyond. So I think that is something that we'll continue to explore um through this process and, you know, sort of celebrate those those opportunities and and. Grow them uh yes, as uh people are ready to do that, but I think it definitely is a a next step for us.
I could just, you know, briefly add to to respond to what you said about, you know, the the future of grades. I think. One of the reasons that grades are so important is because of the, you know, the 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 different audiences for grades, right? And so we know that, you know, that rate, the audience of grades are parents, you know, scholarship committees, um you know, colleges and universities. Right? And so I think that, you know, I think we will always, you know, probably continue to stay within the um the framework of of utilizing, you know. Rating to communicate student mastery so that decisions can be made and, you know, supports can can be leveraged. But I think we are about doing this. Um in a way that is, you know, as thoughtful as possible, um and that um and then as fair as possible.
Superintendent, you wanna jump in here?
Sure, I'm through your chair, so um. You know, I think I think that there are a number of districts that have explored standards-based report cards. Um particularly like at the elementary grades, I think that's sort of like the entree point in. And then I think. You start getting into the middle and high school where you sort of have the breakdown of content. Um that work and that leap to go to competency is a pretty extensive one. Um this obviously is a first step of um an important one, I think, just at a. Of of specifically thinking about assessment and thinking about what mastery looks like. Um but there's, you know, there's a lot of interesting and good work that's going on in BPS around competency in general. Um you know, it's generally always been something that's been attached to educational options. Um but Boston Day and Evening is like a great example that for a long time, right, has done competency-based. Um so, you know, I think these are all things that, you know, that uh as we continue to evolve in in our district, we will look at. But I think for right now, to the committee's point, it's getting this piece right. And getting the implementation of this right and beginning to work with our teachers as partners in thinking about looking at assessment differently. Um so it isn't just grading and testing, uh and just testing and and quizzes, but it is portfolio, it is. Um project-based, it is um, you know, um uh experiential. Like, there's lots of other parts of the menu that I think we will have our hands full of kind of evolving the system. Um but certainly, we have some neat work that's going on in BPS already to sort of look to eventually for. Um for those schools that would want to explore and and actually go much deeper. Uh in the form of mastery by by looking at things like competency or standard-based reporting.
Thank you for, sorry, quick, are there, are you also thinking about like peer assessment? To to some degree as part of that?
I threw you chair. I I think um some, I forget who actually, it might have been Vice Chair O'Neill. That um you just kind of asked a question, what is this pushing more toward? Um high stakes, you know, high stakes kind of assessment. And I think the answer is no, that actually, when we think of assessment. When you think about it, when teachers go through prep to become a teacher, there's an awful lot of time spent on the curriculum and instruction part. Very little time on assessment. And yet it's one of the most important things we do, right, to figure out whether or not a student has actually gained the skill that we're we're looking for. So I think as a district, this is an interesting area for us to explore and develop out. Which are what are the different ways that we can assess? Um that gives us better insight rather than just a test or a quiz as to whether students know something. Can they show it? You know, when we talk about career pathways, that's all about demonstration. That isn't just about, you know, a task. So I think this is an area that, you know, it'll it'll be good. And I think peer is, um, you know, there's schools that use. And and find lots of ways for peers to give feedback um on something that they read that appears done or even on. Uh, you know, if they're doing lab work and experiment. So there's lots of value in that. And I think uh these will be the areas that will just be very enriching, I think, to do both PD around and to actually ask our teacher partners. And educators to think about and show best practice in these areas. So lots more to come on it.
Mr. Maida?
Hi, um, yeah, so I think this all. Well, as um. As you guys were saying, I think this, well, there's bound to be unintended consequences as there is with. Everything, right? Like. I mean, the current grading system, also, as we talked about, we've talked about the consequences of that, right? But I think that this this also so has an added benefit of. Kind of curbing. I'm not saying there's less of. It has the thing of, if you miss a few days, you can get back on track easily. Whereas you're not, it has that added benefit of. When you're scrambling to make up assignments. And you end up falling even farther behind because of that. It's kind of gives that. That slight buffer room. And like, of course, you're not supposed to, you're not supposed to intentionally miss assignments. Because, like. Even with this, if you miss an assignment, your grade's gonna go down, period. So, but like, it sort of de-emphasizes it. I don't know what I'm saying.
Okay. Um, I have a a last question, thinking about, I, you know, I understand particularly how this supports. Some of our students who are struggling in different ways to give them encouragement. To go on and to find ways of making sure they are able to complete, move forward. How does it work at the other end? I think about the our exam schools. And the pressure students are under and the competitiveness that are that's happening. In those schools and the number of, you know, accelerated courses and the pacing and other things that. Are different. And then you think, what does an A mean in BPS? Is as an A at. Exam school A equal an A at other school, you know, how how are we looking at all of these? Different assessment plans and rigor and those things as we look at this policy.
I I think um Chair Robinson, you're really bringing up. A good reason why we are putting forward this draft policy is that. An A shouldn't be different from one side of town to the other or from one type of school to the other. Rather, we have state standards that all students must achieve. We need to do the hard we work of making sure every student has every opportunity to achieve that. And that's why that mastery piece is so important and it would apply to every school. Absolutely. And I think that's also why and part of what we're proposing in this draft is that eighty percent of the entire. Sort of composite is on summative um tasks. And it's not always going to be, say, a test, if you will, but multiple forms of summative assessment. And some of it will be performance-based, right? But it will, we will definitely be, um. I think that clarity um still allows schools to decide which assignments, which tasks. But the standards that we have before us that come from the state. Are applied to every student.
So in lots of ways, we're gonna have to hold ourselves accountable in order to be able to hold our students accountable. Um, you know, because I think a question I ask often is what is the value of a BPS, you know, diploma? When we know that, um even when we sit at the um. Valedictorians luncheon, that we know that even though they are the top of their school. It doesn't mean that grade-wise, they're already to go and be successful at college. Because what those grades have meant are very different. So my hope is that. In several years, that won't be the case. If this is done correctly, is that. An A earned really will equal an A and school in and and um skills. Achieved will really be the skills that in the mastery that will allow our students, irregardless of school. To be able to graduate and go on to whatever next college career and be successful. Um in a more generic way than than is true today. So is is, so that's what I'm seeing this policy is the hope for. And I see a lot of yes nods, so I'm hoping. That's where we're heading.
That is exactly where we're headed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Maida? Your your hand is still raised. Do you have another? No? Okay. Is there any more discussion? If not, I just wanna thank you all for the report. Um it's very thought-provoking for all of us. And um thank you for taking on this task on behalf of of all our students. And um we look forward to um continuing the conversation when we see the next level of the report. Uh we'll now open, move on to public comment on reports, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers.
Right. Thank you. Is there any new business?
Uh, one qu- one question, just wanna know where our thinking is. Uh I know we talked about. Eventually at some point, moving to in-person meetings. Um so what is the thinking around? I don't just. Do we have any current thinking around that and how, you know, families knowing that we're making? What changes might happen to the format of the meeting, et cetera?
Right, um I'll ask Ms. Sullivan, I know one of the things we were waiting to hear back from is what, whether. The state, we have, we are able to remain virtual until March. Or so, in which time we would all supposed to be going back in person. So we wanted to be able to announce that, that that would be our plan. Ms. Sullivan, I'm gonna give it to you here.
Sure, Chair, that's correct. So the emergency legislation that allows for remote meetings. Um that um kicked in during the pandemic, that expires the end of March. So once that expires, um. Public bodies will be meeting again in person. Um there could be um some sort of. Uh additional legislation that happens between now and then, but at this time, we're prepared to go back um in April. And I see that um Senior Advisor Megan Costello is also prepared to speak to that.
Yeah.
Hi.
Yeah, there she is.
Sorry, couldn't find my buttons. Good evening, everybody. Megan Costello, the superintendent's team. Um we have been in touch with the state legislature to try to figure out. What they're planning on doing. Um, you know. I think they're they're not necessarily interested in letting it expire, right? It's either a continuation, a temporary extension. Or passing a new law that might, um you know, bring some sort of combination of the the world that we're currently in right now with both doing virtual. And in person. Um I don't think that they know which direction they're moving in right now, but we will continue to stay up to date on it.
But our intent is to be able to go back in person at some point this spring. Mr. Tron?
Uh, just a a quick request, um in response to. The concern regarding our internal investigation. On uh the kind of letter that was sent a while ago. Um, please make sure that um members do receive some update status, whether uh. In a. I- i- in an executive meeting or or at a public hearing at the next time. Thank you.
Yes, we'll take care of that. Thank you. Is there any other new business? All right, if not, that concludes our business for this evening and the school committee will hold the first in a series of virtual. This go twenty-three, twenty-four budget hearings tomorrow, Thursday, February sixteenth at five P M. To sign up to testify, please visit bostonpublicschools.org slash school committee. Um and. The committee will hold a budget hearing focused on the central budget on Wednesday, March first. On Wednesday, March fifteenth at five P M, the committee will hold the third and final budget hearing. Immediately followed by a regular school committee meeting. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez, Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes, good night.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, and good night all.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.